Good evening. Again, thank you guys for being here tonight. We're now ready to enter into our regular meeting tonight. Today is February the 7th, 2023. Our thought for today is "Men are born to succeed, not to fail." That's by Henry David Thoreau. I'm gonna go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. We have a special pastor here tonight. Sir, if you would, please come on up tonight. Pastor Donnell Beth- Bethay. He is new to the community. We want to welcome you, sir. He and his wife are the pastors at Life Point Church of the Nazarene, and we want to welcome you to the community and welcome tonight. If you would, please, sir, tell us a little bit about yourself, a little bit about your ministry. I know you're in the, I think it's the Navy?
Air Force.
The Air Force, that's right. And if you will, when you get through praying for us, would you lead us in our pledge tonight? We'd be honored to have you to do that.
Yes, sir. Thank you, thank you. Yes, sir. And to Marcelo Baines, our chairman, and all these other elected officials, and everyone who is in here tonight, I greet you and say good evening to you. I am Donnell Bethay, and as Marcelo Baines mentioned, I'm the pastor of Life Point Church of the Nazarene, and I serve along with my wife, who's also the pastor there as well. And we have our family life center here in this community. We try to, you know, rent that out at an affordable price to people who are in need, whether that's for funerals, wedding receptions, birthday parties, things of, things of that nature. And just a little about me, I'm originally from Patterson, New Jersey, and most of, most of my formal education, college career, that was done in North Carolina. I'm a graduate of Fayetteville State University in Fayetteville, North Carolina, and I did my seminary at Campbell University Divinity School in Bowie's Creek, North Carolina. And I'm also, I've just been accepted into the Doctor of Ministry Program at Wesley Theological Seminary in Washington DC. So I look forward to starting that next month. And I'm also a proud member of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated. And with that being said, I'll just lead us, lead us, you said the prayer, then we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Yes, sir. And then I have a special, something I don't want to give you tonight also.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you, thank you. Let us, let us pray. God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to come together and to discuss some things to make this community better. We ask that you please be with all these elected officials and give them all the wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to do what's best and do what's right for our community. Bless everyone who is here, who's at this meeting, who's, who's sitting behind me. Bless these families, every family that's represented here. We all want to see Covington better. We all want to see Newton County better. So just, we ask that you bless Covington, bless Newton County, bless this great state of Georgia, and bless these United States of America that we live in. It is in your holy name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Commissions, I do, there is a need to amend the agenda tonight. You want to add those to the agenda, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there will be two amendments to the agenda tonight. The first will be the consideration and approval, make sure I read it, consideration and approval of the acceptance of an ARPA grant for drinking water projects. And, Mr. Chair, I would recommend that that be added as item 24A underneath the existing Cornish Creek product, item.
He'll get opportunity in a minute.
And the second amendment, I would recommend be inserted as item 9A, will be consideration of a second amendment to the contract of sale between the City of Covington and Newton Land Investments LLC. And again, I would recommend that be inserted as item 9A.
What was the name of it again?
Consideration of the Second Amendment to the Contract of Sale between the City of Covington and Newton Land Investments.
Amen, let's get a motion on the floor and then you can, we'll do discussion, sir. I think a mo, as soon as we get a motion on the floor, you'll get. Can I get a motion to amend the agenda, please?
It's about the author funding, Mr. Chairman, and I wanted to see if we could, it's about the author funding. And I want to see if we could add in about the million dollars for the commission that we never, at least I never have. I got a, here, as for, is it done with? Are you taking away from us? Do we need a vote? We voted it in for us to have it, but we haven't voted out for us not to have it. And I believe the proper way to do it is to vote it out. So I think there needs to be a discussion while we're discussing author funding is to talk about that million dollars each commission was supposed to have. And I think two commissioners have already spent their million in their respective district of what, or off of what they want. But the other three, we have not.
So we can add that to the discussion for number 12.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I need a motion, please. Thank you. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any more discussion? All in favor? Passing 5-0. Thank you so much. Next is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity that we allow citizens to talk about agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. You may comment this time. Agenda topics only. Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is David Jenkins. I live at 110 Bentley Place Way, Covington, Georgia. I'm here to talk about a number nine, agenda number nine, vehicle truck parking in your own driveway. First of all, I just want to thank the commissioners for their fast response. You saw a problem with the ordinance that affected the whole community negatively. You moved quick to, you know, fix it. Throughout the county, there's hardworking people that drive the work vehicles home. A pickup truck with a ladder on it or a toolbox in the back of the truck are not allowed with this ordinance. Carpenters, plumbers, electricians, landscapers, AT&amp;T, security people, this ordinance that affects their means to earn a living, unable to drive a work van home or a truck, the blue collar workers forced to park off-site, sometimes at a large cost, not to mention the extra gas and the undue lemon, undue use of the limited resources, as well as reducing the security to their own vehicles. Also, increasing the time that it takes to respond to emergencies, such as the tornadoes that we just had that hit the south part of the county. Within minutes, carpenters and roofers responded and secured the houses and buildings and helped the people having to retrieve their vehicles from a shop. May increase that time by hours. What people don't understand is this is countywide and affects all commercial vehicles. This also includes a real estate agent that has a label on their vehicle or a ladder rack on top of their vehicle, the insurance guy that has a ladder rack on top of his vehicle, and even the politician that has the "Vote for Me" sign in the back of his truck. With the county increasing the high-density populations in certain parts, these homes may go unsold due to the fact that the blue collar worker chooses to live somewhere in a different county that is more welcoming to them. That decreases the labor force in this county. This ordinance could snowball and create more problems than anybody could imagine. Again, I just want to thank you for your fast response on this ordinance that affects the lives of thousands and thousands of people that don't even know it affects them yet. I've done a lot for this community, between helping the seniors with seniors connections, doing work for people that can't afford it for free. The list of volunteer work that I have done throughout this community for my life, I can't tell you how much I've done. The jobs, the, the money that it takes to park my vehicle off the lot can affect me doing volunteer work and reduce cost work as well as other people. At a time when it's difficult to get skilled trade workers, a company vehicle is a well-earned perk. It benefits them as well as the community. That way, it's completely unnecessary to take that away from them.
Thank you so much, sir.
Is my three minutes up?
Yes, yes, sir. Can you present that to me, please? I would greatly appreciate it. And we can, we can have it in a minute, that's okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Please state your name, your address for the record, please. You have three minutes to do so. Agenda topics only, agenda topics only.
Number 24.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Johnny Stone. I reside at 500 Cochrane Road in Covington, Georgia. I live about 400 feet from Cornish Creek in the county. The city owns down to the creek. And y'all are gonna put water down that far. With that 161,000 square foot building you're building up there on the top of the hill, and go along with that technological center that's already been built, and they cleared all the timber off on the left-hand side, I don't know what they're gonna build over there. But when I moved in there about 20 years ago, there was a sign that said, "No 18-wheelers pass SKC." Well, that sign's gone. So 18-wheelers are going that way. When y'all done the bridge down there on 81, no. Anyhow, the road that goes by the jail, when y'all redone that bridge, everybody in social circle found out that Hazel Bran Road was the best way to Wal-Mart. So traffic on there is tripled. The number of houses down through there is tripled. What I'm asking for you is to join your water to the, to Newton County and put fire hydrants down Hazel Bran Road. The Trussell Highway has it, everybody has it, but we got all that construction going on and there's not one fire hydrant on the other side of Cornish Creek, which is in the county.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. You have three minutes to do so tonight.
Good evening. Debbie Harper, President of the Newton Chamber. I'm gonna try to talk quick because I want to touch on a couple of topics. To echo Mr. Jenkins on item number nine, he is a chamber member and came to me after he received notice of the county for his vehicle being parked there. So I would like to ask that there be a consensus that we can work on this ordinance. I gave you all a copy of his vehicle that was parked at his house, as well as a copy of the ordinance. He and I did meet with Shane, Director Applewhite, interim Director Applewhite, last week. So I would ask for consensus to continue to work on that ordinance from you all. Also want to speak to you all on item number 12, the ARPA funding. I have, as the President of the Chamber, I represent 600 businesses in Newton County that equates to around 20,000 employees in and around this area. And on behalf of the Chamber Board, our membership, our Small Business Committee, some of who are in the audience tonight, and two of our board members, we would like to request that there be a requirement that any business receiving ARPA funding in Newton County have a valid Newton County business license or a valid business license in a municipality that lies within the boundaries of Newton County. I understand this is not a requirement by the Treasury, but it is a requirement by Newton County to operate a business here. And we feel that should mirror that requirement here in the county. There are several metro counties that require this. I have copies of that, to name a few. Clayton, Henry, Cherokee, some of the cities, City of South Fulton, Stonecrest, Conyers, and Norcross. Some of the larger counties have portals, so I was not able to access the questionnaire in those portals. But in my research, the majority do require a valid business license to receive the ARPA funds. Further, I would like to request an amendment to tonight's agenda that a vote be taken to include the requirement that any business receiving ARPA funding from Newton County have a valid business license in Newton County or a valid business license in a municipality that lies within the boundaries of Newton County. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Comments? Anything else?
No, ma'am, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next, please. Agenda topics only tonight. At this point, you have three minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
My name is Cecily Bell, and this is my husband, O.C. Bell. We want to bring up number 12 here that's on your agenda. And we're standing up tonight for the youth of Newton County and the seniors of Newton County with the $4 million that was granted here tonight, I mean, to Ms. Sanders and her area. As parents, we need that youth, that money for that youth. We need the money for the seniors. We need those finances here in Newton County. We need those community centers built. We need all those things recognized. It's not fair that the monies have to be divided or whatever. We, my, my, my kids need a place. They're AA students, honor roll students. They need a place that they can go to and feel safe. And if any of you have children, you will feel the same. Like, at this point, like, your, your topic for today says, "Men are born to succeed, not fail." But the ones of you that did not vote for this are causing us to fail. You're causing our seniors to fail. You're causing not only the seniors to fail, but the youth as well. It is not fair. So we need you all to be commissioners of whatever areas you are. Stand up for these children because we're losing them by the day. Not only are we losing the youth by the day, but we're losing the seniors because the youth don't have a place to go and they're killing our seniors. They're robbing our seniors. So they need something like this in Newton County. We have all that land across from Cousins Middle School, all that land, and nobody can put anything there for these babies to occupy themselves and to be better. Shame on you, the ones that did not vote just now for this act. Shame on you!
So, so guys, let me, hold on one second, sir. So let me, let me address you right quick because some of you may not have been here before. Guys, we don't do outbursts. We're gonna run this like a business meeting, that's what it's for. And if you can't conduct yourselves like that, you're gonna be asked to leave. So please, please, ma'am, please, sir, hold your applause. If you want, if you would like to address one of your commissioners or the chair after the meeting, you can do so. Come on up, sir. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. You have three minutes to do so, sir.
Good evening. My name is Carvez Keys. I'm also a new business in the Newton County area, 33 and 3rd Barbin Beauty Academy. What I've noticed since I've been coming to these meetings, each week it's been a battle about helping the community, more so District 3 and 4. I've been saying.
Which number you want to speak on? Agenda topics only right now, which number you would, which you like?
12. The one that Commissioner Henderson is speaking on now. In the likes of, I'm aware that District 1 and 2 have received the million dollars and, and also aware that District, they'll let, I'll let them figure that out. Yet, they have been fighting week after week to help 3 and 4 and asking them to put it into the budget. I'm also aware that one of the districts actually made their citizens aware of what was gonna happen to the million dollars if they didn't fight for it before they actually got it. But they got the money already. Why is it still, don't address it, throw it in the trash, and putting the money back into the pot, the bigger pot, when small businesses are suffering? I'm a brand-new business in this county, and I can't get no help. I'm here to help people, teach students how to get, to, to feed themselves. But I'm, District 3 and 4 are suffering by hearing each week they don't want to allow the money to be going out to the citizens.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. This is comments about agenda topics only, please, agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so.
If I had my card with my name and address on it, I could hand you. I'm not comfortable giving mine and my address to people I don't know.
You can break it right here, please.
All my information's on there. I am a Newton County citizen.
I hope y'all can hear me, most people can't. But I wanted to speak to the issue of the $4 million grant that Hank Johnson has.
It's not on agenda tonight. You gotta talk about agenda topics only.
Y'all just talked about it.
Agenda, it has to be agenda, if you, you can talk about it. We have to be at the end of the meeting doing those comments. We're talking about agenda topics only right now.
Okay, does that include the locations that y'all just discussed and voted on on where this would take place?
That's not on this, that's not on this agenda.
It's not on the agenda formally. Okay, well, then I will go then to agenda items 14 and 22 that are, are on the agenda.
Now, you can, hold, can you stop the time for a second? Now, you can address the ARPA funds because ARPA funds are on the agenda. If you wanted to do that, you can. But if, that $4 million grant is, is not on the agenda tonight.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Okay, so agenda item number 14 is the purchasing requesting approval of a contract between Newton County and iParametrics for grant consulting. Okay. It's kind of interesting to me that it's never been a topic before now and maybe some news articles. Okay, so, so iParametrics. My, my question is, has, was iParametrics selected and was it competitively bid? Did you all reach out to other providers whose specialty is, in fact, grant writing? I did a little research on Parametrics, their emergency management, their homeland security, their program management, and their cost engineering. Okay, so, you know, just, you know, as transparency, and I have, I have a background in procurement where when we were seeking somebody to perform a service for us, then it was competitively bid, okay? And it was sealed bids, et cetera. So my question for you is that, now, this reads, "Cost not to exceed $10,000 per grant," which kind of leaves a little question mark in that. It is repeated, and this isn't, is this not in the budget currently? And it's repeated again, but with one thing different on item number 22 on the agenda, also about iParametrics. Grant amount, "Cost not to exceed grant amount." Have y'all done your research on what the average grant writer gets per hour in the Georgia area? Because it's $22 per hour on average. So if, if iParametrics has been selected, how, how did that occur? Did you all have a role in having a voice in that? Question mark, maybe you did. Just going by what we see, sometimes the agenda is vague, so it begs more questions than it does answers. So I will, I'm gonna run out of time, but I'd like to know if Newton County, and by the way, as one Newton County, we really would like the constituents and citizens of this, of this county would like y'all to really behave like one Newton County, okay? So that's my primary question, and that would apply to anything that we award contracts to. Is it done competitively? And how does that look like on the ground?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, please. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. You have three minutes to do so. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Nette Austin. I'm president of the Trelawney Homeowners Association. And I'm, I'm going to be up later on to speak on the Boys and Girls Club that they're apparently planning on putting, adjoining the Trelawney and into our area. But right now, I want to talk about agenda item nine, dealing with the truck ordinance, which in, on the agenda, and I pulled up the agenda early, it doesn't give details on what that ordinance is. And so my, you know, concern is if you're going to have a discussion on something, number one, give the people an idea of what the discussion is gonna be about. What, what does this, what is this ordinance about, ahead of time? So people know what to address. I will say that we are already having problems with parking on the street. Too many cars parking on the street, both sides of the street. Some streets are narrow, which prevents delivery trucks, emergency vehicles from getting up the street. How much worse is that going to be? How much is this gonna be compounded if you allow trucks to park on the street as well? So I want you to think about that. You know, when you make a decision on the ordinance, there should not be trucks parked on some of these streets, particularly within HOA subdivisions because a lot of these streets are not big, and it causes a danger. Larger trucks could cause even a, a bigger danger because you don't know what could happen in terms of a truck rolling into another, into another house across the street from it, whatever. It could cause a lot of damage. So we just, we try not to, I want you to think about that when you make a decision on this ordinance. And, and also, please, give people a heads-up as to what's in the ordinance before this day, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. You have three minutes to do so. Agenda topics only.
My name is Shereen Lena. I live at 474 Smith Door Road. I need to know, trying to find out what is on the topics number nine of what is in the ordinance of the truck part, parking. Does anybody know? Is it commercial trucks? Or are they industrial trucks? Are they dump trucks? Semi-trucks?
You can, you can make your comments. You can make your comments. And you can act, you can approach one of your commissioners or the chair if you would like after the meeting. But make your comments, and we'll take you, put them in the minutes.
Well, the comments are is that I've had issues with people with their commercial vehicles on their property and not getting fined for them or getting extensions or code enforcement not doing their job. And not to mention that it causes a lot of wear and tear on, on the roads, maintaining their vehicles on the property, having their employees show up on the property, pick up the vehicles. And this is a residential area, okay? This should not happen to happen. This has been going on for months. So I just want to know what's gonna go happen with the ordinance, that's all. Because I believe that one commercial vehicle has to be on 10 acres of property, and if so, it has to be in an enclosure or parked behind the person's home. And none of that's been done. So I just want to know, you know, what exactly is gonna go on with these ordinances when it comes to truck parking, that's all.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you. Citizens' comments is closed. Chairman's report tonight, we have our audit update. Martin Jenkins is here tonight. Mr. David Irvin is here tonight. If you would, please, come on up.
Good evening, everyone, uh, hope you all are doing well, again, my name's David Irwin, and I'm with Mauden Jenkins. I was the partner who oversaw this year's audit of the county's financial statements. And I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here with you all this evening to, uh, to discuss with you all the results of this year's audit. Uh, I won't take up too much of your time, but the, the purpose of my presentation is to, uh, provide you all an overview of our independent auditor's report. Um, hit a few of the financial statement highlights, talk about, uh, the two compliance reports that we issued in conjunction with the audit. Uh, discuss some information that the auditing standards requires that we communicate to you all. And, uh, obviously answer any questions that you all may have. Now, uh, the financial statements themselves, they are the responsibility of management and members of the board, as your independent auditors. Uh, our responsibility is to issue an opinion on these statements. Uh, we conducted our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and governmental auditing standards. And, uh, I'm happy to say that we are issuing a clean or unmodified opinion on this year's report. Uh, this is what you want, this is the highest level of assurance that we can provide as your external auditor. Uh, what this means is that in our opinion, the financial statements are considered to be fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. Um, again, as part of the audit, there are two compliance reports that we issue, the first of which being a single audit. Again, a single audit is a compliance audit that is required when an entity has over, or spends over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of federal funds. Um, you all had approximately twenty-one and a half million dollars of federal expenditures, expenditures this year, um, which resulted in, again, us having to perform a single audit of one major program, uh, which was the COVID recovery, uh, funds program. And, uh, as was the case with the financial audit, we are issuing a clean or unmodified opinion on the single audit as well. Um, the second compliance report is something that we call the Yellow Book Report, uh, which is a report on the county's internal controls and your compliance with various laws and regulations. And, uh, I'm pleased to say that we do not have any audit financed reporting of all this year, meaning we noted no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the county's internal controls during our audit. Um, yeah, as you can tell, when you look through your financial statements, you know, for a county of your size, there's obviously a significant amount of financial activity for which you all have to report on. Um, in addition, with all the new accounting standards are being implemented each year, and all the changes, and really just how complex a financial reporting process has become, uh, it makes it all the more impressive to, to stand here for you tonight and, and say that you all have a clean opinion with no audit findings. So, again, that is certainly something that you all should be proud of. Um, and to me, it, it really speaks volumes about the hard work done by your staff. Um, Brittany and her staff, they did a great job again this year. Uh, they were very accommodating to our audit team, they, uh, they, they had everything ready for us. And, uh, you were able to answer all our questions, and, and again, get us everything that we needed in order to get the audit finalized on time. And, and not just during the audit itself, but just throughout the year, you know, one, one thing I, I certainly appreciate about Brittany and her staff is, is that they are proactive and not reactive. If something comes up during the year, they have a question about, um, they're not gonna wait until the audit starts to, to, to address it. Uh, they wanna go ahead and reach out to us and, and, and get that, uh, get that question resolved. I actually had a, a conversation with them last week about, uh, about a certain item. So, again, that proactivity, being proactive, not reactive, that communication throughout the year, uh, really attributes to a, to a smooth and timely audit. So, again, just wanna thank your staff for their hard work this year, and, and we have certainly, uh, enjoyed working with them. Uh, now, for a brief overview of your financial statements, again, you all prepare what is called an annual comprehensive financial report, uh, otherwise known as an ACFR. Now, an ACFR, uh, includes additional information that goes above and beyond the basic financial reporting requirements. This document is submitted annually to the Government Finance Officer Association, uh, otherwise known as the GFOA, where they put it through a pretty stringent review process, not only by their professional staff, but they also have a special review committee, uh, that looks at your document as well. And, when they look at the county's ACFR, their goal is not to assess the financial health of the county. What they wanna do is make sure that the necessary information is in your report, so the readers of your financial statements, uh, can do so themselves. And through this review, uh, the county was once again awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for fiscal, for fiscal year twenty-one, and that certificate is included in this report. So, um, again, this is a very impressive document, again, just, just another example of how your finance department and you all go above and beyond, uh, the, the minimum reporting requirements. And again, as I mentioned earlier, this is certainly something you all should be proud of. Um, as you look through your reports, you know, one section I always like to point out, uh, is the Management's Discussion Analysis, uh, otherwise known as the MDNA, this begins on page six of the financial statements, it's right after our audit opinion. Um, I would strongly encourage everyone to, to read the MDNA. The purpose of the MDNA is, is to provide, uh, is to provide, um, a, a, a broader audience, to, to let a broader audience use and better understand your financial statements. And, uh, it, it does this by providing a narrative explanation, uh, of your financial statements from management's perspective. So, um, again, if you have a question about any fluctuations and financial activity that occurred throughout the year, or anything unique or unusual that happened, oftentimes, you can find that answer in the MDNA. Um, again, this section does a really good job of summarizing the financial statements and providing the reader a broad overview, um, of the financial activity that occurred during the year. So, again, um, if you can, I would, I would strongly encourage you all to read the MDNA. Uh, to briefly discuss the financial, uh, the financial highlights, you know, of all the county's funds, if I'm in your shoes, uh, the, the most interest to me would be the general fund. Again, it's the main operating fund of the county, and it's where the majority of your revenues are received and funds expended. And, uh, to, just to give you a quick, uh, financial summary, total revenues of the general fund were around eighty-three point five million dollars, um, that's a decrease of about three point eight million dollars compared to prior year. The majority of that decrease, actually, all of that decrease, uh, was a result of your decrease in intergovernmental revenue. Again, intergovernmental revenue, that fluctuates from year to year, uh, just depending on the, the, the federal grants that you all are receiving. Um, property taxes are obviously the primary source of the general fund. It totaled a little over seventy-two million dollars for the year, and it accounted for eighty-six percent, um, of the general fund's revenues. Couple of the financial, uh, revenue sources worth noting, you all had approximately five point three million dollars in charges for services, and around one point seven million dollars in licenses and permits for the year. Uh, and looking at the general fund expenditures, they totaled just under seventy million dollars for the year, uh, which was an increase of around three million dollars compared to FY twenty-one. Once again, no surprise, uh, the, the majority of these expenditures are for public safety, uh, which was around forty million dollars, and that counted for approximately fifty-seven percent of your general fund's expenditures. County also had, you know, general government expenditures of just under eleven million, and public works expenditures of right at six million dollars for the year. After factoring in other financing sources and uses such as transfers in, uh, and out of other funds, um, the general fund's fund balance increased, uh, around eleven point eight million dollars this year, for an ending balance of fifty-two million dollars. Um, and, and one thing I always like to remind people, when we talk about fund balance, you know, fund balance is not what you all have in the form of cash, uh, to spend as you see fit. Um, fund balance is merely the difference between assets and liabilities, only a portion of which is available cash. Additionally, one thing, another thing to keep in mind is the, the general fund encourages expenditures of approximately five point eight million dollars per month. So, um, you all ended the year with an unassigned fund balance, um, equal to approximately nine months' worth of operating expenditures. And then, that's strong, especially for, for June thirty year end. Uh, however, with you all being a June thirty year end, um, you know, it's, it's good to see that you, you all have that strong fund balance, cause those, those revenues, that fund balance is needed during the months of July through November, when your revenues are typically down. But again, uh, for you all to have, be a June thirty year in and have nine months' worth of, worth of unassigned fund balance, uh, is, is strong, and it's, it's certainly something that you all should be proud of. Uh, aside from the general fund, you know, you all have other numerous governmental funds, your special revenue funds, your capital projects funds. Uh, for the sake of time, I wanted to go into those in detail, but, um, overall, those are, those are all in good shape financially as well. Uh, a couple of the funds I do wanna briefly mention are the county's two major enterprise funds, which again are your water sewer fund and your solid waste fund. Um, you know, enterprise funds, they're, they're used to, to, to record transactions in a manner, some of that of a private sector business. The goal of these funds are to be self-sufficient, and to generate, uh, sufficient operating revenues to cover their operating expenses. And, um, both the water sewer fund and the solid waste fund had operating income this year. Water sewer was around three point nine million, and, uh, solid waste fund was, was nine hundred thousand dollars, uh, for the year. Again, both funds had operating income and, and generated strong, positive, uh, operating cash flows. So, again, that's, that's certainly what you all want to see out of your enterprise funds. Um, one final item to issue, to discuss with you all, again, it's just information that the auditing standards requires that we communicate. Um, with you all receiving a clean opinion and no, no audit findings, you know, it's really essentially formality, but we had no disagreements with management. Uh, we received full cooperation from county management and staff, there were no, as I said, there were no disagreements. Uh, there were no significant issues discussed that would have negatively affected the financial statements. And again, we are independent of the county, as required by governmental auditing standards. And, um, with that, unless anybody has any questions, that concludes my presentation. But, uh, I, I, I do wanna, do wanna thank your staff again for their hard work this year, and we certainly appreciate the opportunity to be serviced, you all.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. First of all, we wanna do, thank Brittany and her, her team for doing an amazing job, uh, with the finances. I think Commissioner Sanders was first.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the number you said was the revenue for solid waste?
Uh, well, your operating income, let me get to that section here. You had operating revenues of five point five million dollars, back out operating expenses around four point six, which is an operating income, um, of nine hundred nine thousand dollars.
So, the profit basically is nine hundred thousand coming in?
Yes.
So, and the reason why I ask that, cause we're spending more out now that it's an authority than we did when it was under the county?
We spent two, okay.
Guys, guys, we'll, we'll do that. Um, Commissioner Henderson, did you have a question? Go ahead, sir.
Yes, indeed, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Uh, my question is this, balance, the county as a whole have no insurance. Would that have any bearing, uh, uh, on, on your, on your study as far as what you done? Otherwise, we self-insured. And so, would that affect anything in a way, or has, has, or he's looked at, was that a part of the audit?
It, it is part of the audit, and, and, uh, we, we had no issues.
So, if, so if we were to have, um, um, something major, or somebody get hurt, uh, and, and by us being just self-insured, then you don't mean to merge, you know, we probably take, what, fifty million dollars and pay it, if it was not over there? So, we don't need, so we could stay, so other words, in your audit, we could stay self-insured, and that'll be okay?
Yeah, yes, again, but we, we noted no issues during, during our testing of that.
Thank you, sir, anyone else? Anyone else? Uh, Commissioner Cowan?
Um, just a quick paragraph, I guess. What is, what is your, what is your opinion in the financial state of the county?
I, 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 I was impressed, again, I, I go back to your fund balance, your general fund. Um, GFOA, which again is, is, is the organization which you submit your, your report, um, for certification.
Can, can you talk into Mike Ford, please? Thank you, sir.
Sorry. Uh, GFOA, which again is the report, the organization which you submit your report, uh, when, when they, when they talk about fund balance, they're, they're looking at, they suggest, depending on your year-end, they suggest four to six months' worth of, worth of unassigned fund balance, and you all are sitting in nine months' worth of unassigned fund balance. So, again, um, that's, that's, that's really good to see.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Another question, uh, um, Mr. Sims?
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman, I just wanted to acknowledge the finance department under the leadership of Director White for doing a great job, this says a lot about our finance department, as well as her leadership, and I'd like to just applaud her for her efforts.
Thank you so much, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, next on the agenda, guys. Guys. Next on the agenda is, uh, county manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I would like to have Pastor Delet come up and provide a quick overview of our warming shelters.
Good evening, Chair Commissioners.
Good evening.
County Manager, I'm here to give a, a quick, um, report. Um, as I was here before, um, on the number of nightly people that slept nightly in both location, the church and the gym, Nazim over on Giger Street, uh, from January the fourteenth until January the twenty-fifth. We had a hundred thirty-eight women's, a hundred and sixty-six men, and thirty children. That's at the, um, the site at the gym. At the church, it was seventy-nine women, forty-seven men, and twenty-seven children. Make a total of four hundred and eighty-six in total. And I'm also here tonight to, uh, thank the city and the county for pondering to make sure that our county resident had a warm place. Um, we've come down to the end. We will be closing February the, the twenty-eighth. Um, the contract stated the thirty-first, that the funds won't allow us to go to the thirty-first. Um, so, in doing that, the weather had warmed up a lot, nice weather. So, we decided to go ahead and, and prepare our send-out notices to the, um, the people at the women's center and the employees, that we will be closing February twenty-eighth. In addition to that, um, the payroll amount salaries have been forty-two thousand, uh, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Other expenses has been eight thousand, six hundred, eighty-eight dollars and twenty cents, making a grand total of fifty-one thousand, six hundred, forty-one, forty-five dollars and twenty cents, which leaving a balance of thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty cents, which we have salaries, uh, for this month, uh, will be two weeks, uh, salaries. So, we will need, and I pray this board vote upon it tonight, where I will have to close in early, uh, fifteen thousand dollars to, uh, complete, um, the women's center for closing. And that will make everyone from the chef department, which have done an awesome job, our employees. People have worked from December the fourteenth until now, not taking one day off. So, I just congratulate the employees that have worked throughout this county to make sure that women's center has stayed open. So, I'm saying to you tonight, I, I pray that you would vote upon this tonight, that we get the addition fund that we will have, we can go until February the twenty-eighth. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Commissioner Henderson?
Well, 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 first of all, Reverend, I just wanna thank you, uh, for, you know, doing what you have did in the community for several years, and, and that's really sounding good. So, people can come to the, um, gym, historic gym over on Giger Street, and to the, uh, what you said, to the twenty-eighth, twenty-eighth of this month, they still can come to twenty-eighth.
Yes.
And we need to give an additional fifteen thousand and somewhat.
This is supposed to salary?
Yes, ma'am, oh, yes, ma'am, no doubt, what I'm saying, I'm kinda figuring what we need to do in order to get to where we need to be to the twenty-eighth. Because there's been a couple that's, um, been calling my house. And they have one small child, yes, ma'am, there've been a couple that've been calling my house, they have one small child, and they, uh, she's pregnant, and then, and they ha, they, they having, they having to move. And I would bring them to my house, but we're full already, we're just folks who live in my home. And so, um, if we could get them over to the, to the warming shelter, I guess now, up until the, um, uh, twenty-eighth, and then maybe we can help them, try to help them figure out something else after then. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, once again, Reverend.
You get your question? Mr. Sims?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, we would like to acknowledge Wendy Patterson, the Newton County Emergency Management Team, Chris Malcolm, Chester Clegg, and the Public Works Department for their exceptional efforts and diligent responses during and after the weather event that occurred on January 12th. I also would like to acknowledge and congratulate our new Director, Ms. Shayna Applewhite. She was selected as our Developmental Services Director. Shayna has eight years of experience here in the county, and she's been doing a great job. And finally, one of the tasks, when I started back in March of last year, we talked about a website. I would like to introduce our new website and have Mr. Fazio, our Public Information Officer, come up and talk about it.
He can sit there. Yeah, I'm going to sit here so I can drive. Thank you, Interim County Manager Sims, and thank you, Chairman and Board. Yeah, when Mr. Sims came on board, we talked about ways to continue our engagement and move Newton forward. I know you've seen the increase in videos, as well as the increase in quality with 4K. One of the other things was to identify our website and to improve that. So we began a redesign process many months ago, and we'll start at the beginning. For those who don't know, I know we have a full house tonight. You can either go to co.nuton.gus.us or alias ncboc.com for Newton County Board of Commissioners. You see we have new colors, you see a 4K video that Mr. James Tucker produced out of our office that goes, and it just kind of brings us into modern times, if you will, on the website. We still have the menu, it's a little more legible now. It also looks good on the cell phones, I don't know if you've seen that yet. We've identified, you know, through analytics, what people are clicking on and what they're looking for our website for, and we have placed those in easy-to-access buttons, of course. If they're looking for something, search bar right there when you find it. So that will help our citizens and visitors alike navigate. We also added these menus to help navigate as well. I know people tell me it was a little difficult to find things, wasn't as smooth, so we tried to, we tried to put things that people look for in multiple places. Down here, we have more news items that we're able to show off for the public who does come and look at our website. Scroll a little further down, a part that I've enjoyed developing was the Transparency Center. The meetings, the most recent meeting is placed in the video, so people can watch the most recent video. Also, we have SPOSS Projects, Finance, Paving, and Board Meetings. I will click on one, depending on Internet, SPOSS Projects will bring you to a story map, and for time's sake, it takes a little while with our Internet in here, but also our finance, and you can look at all of our agendas and so on and so forth. Continue down calendar, as we always had, Facebook with our firewalls in here, we can't look at Facebook in our work computer, so that's why that's not showing up. But this is a project that we've been working on for some time. I'd like to thank Greg, Manor IT Director, for helping out, as well as a few other employees, Shayna Applewhite, Scott Zarak, and Ms. Waka, Mr. James in the back. We rolled out last Tuesday, January 31st, so we are excited for that and hope you enjoy it, and it's, so far, it's gotten good reviews. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. While I have the mic, I know we talked about this earlier, Mr. Sims, also, one of the things, if you look up, you wave, you're all in 4K cameras now, you've seen previously we had monitors and computers added. I hope you can hear the sound better in here, we've got a new soundboard, sound mixer. You've got cameras behind you, you've got cameras in front of you, you're streaming live. So yeah, those are improvements we also made to improve our engagement and keep moving it forward. Thank you.
That's everything? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the next item we have on the agenda is item number eight, the Consent Agenda, the first item being a District Three Appointment to the Planning Commission, Ms. Tiffany Benton.
Thank you. Ms. Tiffany, if you would, please stand, we will be recognized, we greatly appreciate you and your willingness to serve. Thank you so much. We see you all over the place, the things that you and your family's doing, your son Justin is doing in the community, so congratulations on all the things that he is accomplishing, and thank you so much for being willing to serve your community. Thank you. Commissioners, with that being said, I seek a motion that we approve. Uh-huh. No? Yeah, we're just acknowledging her. Again, thank you so much for being willing to serve your community. With that being said, Commissioners, I seek a motion that we approve the Consent Agenda. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and seconded by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, we're on item number nine, items for discussion and consideration. This is item number nine, the Discussion of Truck Parking Ordinance in Residential Areas and Communities.
Thank you so much. I think Commissioner Cowan had wanted to speak to you guys on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had several calls from people, and I didn't realize our ordinance had such an impact on small business people, particularly people that do business out of their vehicles, like a air conditioning unit, or air conditioning job, or electrical job, anything like that. These people are, these citizens who are parking their vehicle at home because they pretty much work from home and go do their job. They don't have another place to go park their vehicle. And I looked through the ordinance, and we talked with, well, talked with several folks, but I don't think the intent when we drafted the ordinance was to prohibit a small businessman from utilizing a vehicle and parking it with some degree of obscurity or whatever at his house. I think we were trying, when we, the ordinance was written at the time, was designed to prohibit tractor trailers and things like that from being parked. And of course, we don't like that. There are some issues with trucks like wrecker services that pull for the county. It doesn't make sense for the driver to go to the impound lot to drive and pick up a wrecker, and then go to the county wherever the accident scene is, or whatever they're having to do that for, so. That seemed to have, those type of vehicles seemed to have an impact, so, or the ordinance had an impact on people trying to manage those type of vehicles. I asked that the county attorney take a look at revamping some things with our county ordinance and some of the issues that have come up with it. I would like to have a, just a moratorium on enforcement until we get this resolved, so that there's no more tickets written right now, and we're not flooding the court system over there with things like that, until we decide what the ordinance needs to look like. So that's what I would like to ask the board to consider.
There's other Commissioners that I'm wanting to speak on that. Are you making that in the form of a motion? Or did you make that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we ask our county attorney to redraft the ordinance as it applies to commercial vehicles in residential areas, maybe some stipulations, well, I'm Ask the county attorney to modify the ordinance to take into consideration the impacts that we're having on small business people with certain type of vehicles. And in the meantime, second part of that motion would be to defer enforcement or suspend enforcement of that until we get that ordinance redrafted.
Second, it's, the motion been made by Commissioner Cowan and been seconded by Commissioner Henderson. Discussion, we got Commissioner Edwards, and then Commissioner Sanders, and then Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Mr. Jenkins, Mr. Jenkins' letter was forwarded to me by Commissioner Sanders, or forwarded to us by Commissioner Sanders, and I thought, just off the cuff, the suggestion he had was great, I won't go into what that is here now. I understand the intent of the ordinance, and most of the counties and municipalities around us have the same ordinance. We're in a different time, a different era now, especially as it relates to COVID and what the impact it had on the workforce. So it's moved us to a different place in terms of our workforce. So I'm in, I'm in favor of a moratorium for now, but I, Ms. Applewhite and I had a conversation on the side a few minutes ago, and I think there needs to be some discussion amongst the Commissioners with some input from citizenry in terms of a, maybe a work session, to understand their ideas, because is, the last thing we need is a knee-jerk reaction, and we've got to reconvene and change, and try to change the ordinance again about, because of something, some nuance we didn't think of. So I would suggest, and I don't know how you would do this, Commissioner Cowan, you could, Commissioner Cowan may want to rescind his motion, I don't know, but I would suggest a work session, and we really spent an hour talking about this. I believe in Districts Two, Three, and Four, especially, it's going to be impacting to those folks, the working folks that have those particular vehicles at the house, and at their homes, and I would like to really, really understand where we're headed before we put a new ordinance together and vote on it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll let you ask that question in one second. Commissioner Sanders?
I'm in agreeance of the moratorium, or amending the motion. I was going to ask you to actually amend it, to make sure there's stipulations on what type of vehicles, because we don't want to just put a moratorium out there, and any type of vehicle can park in various residential area and subdivisions, because that's been an issue also. My subdivision was 18-wheelers and some dump truck. So we want to make sure that we are putting a stipulation on the size of the truck, that it can fit in the driveway, the noise, that's one thing people have been complaining about, is the noise of certain vehicles. So the one that our constituent actually put before us, that one is, of course, is not a problem. I don't see a problem with that one. But we need to make sure that we put stipulation before we go out and put a moratorium, and everybody's just parking everywhere, but we already voted on it, because we said there's not going to be any issues, that we're going to relinquish the code enforcement.
If I could make a recommendation, twofold, you don't need a motion to ask me to start working on an ordinance. I think I've heard the concerns, I don't need you to vote to authorize me to start working on an ordinance. I'll get with Ms. Applewhite and her staff, and we'll work on some revisions and some options to present to the board. As far as a moratorium goes, I would recommend against a moratorium, and let me explain why. I don't want to get, I don't want you to create tonight a new, essentially a new ordinance that would likely be unenforceable because you're not complying with the zoning procedures law. So what you would be doing is authorizing some truck parking, but continuing to prohibit other truck parking, and arguably, you've amended the zoning ordinance when you do that. My recommendation would be, I think the interim county manager has heard your discussions, the code enforcement staff reports to him, I think he could direct code enforcement staff to use some discretion in issuing citations while we work through this program, problem, and we can have a product to deliver back to you for consideration relatively quickly. And if we can get it done, if we get it done between meetings, perhaps the right thing to do would be schedule a workshop meeting. But in any case, you're going to have to comply with the zoning procedures law to do this.
Let me get Commissioner Henderson then, Commissioner Mason then, go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, I just want to just add, just a little bit to it, I was here in, because I've been here for a long time, that's why I constantly tell my kids, especially my son, I say, don't get rid of all your old folks, they might be, tell you something that you might need to know. This particular order that we done that particular time, it wasn't against those smaller trucks, it was because there was a lot of tractor trailer trucks parking in the front of their yards, and so the order was supposed to have those trucks park in the back of their homes if they could, or even behind some kind of shelter or something, out of view of the road. And so I think when they were starting, since I've just now learned of this, started issuing all those tickets, they were issuing the tickets to the wrong folk, they shouldn't have issued those people those tickets. And if they didn't know the ordinance, and that's why I always say, ask somebody who might know, who might give you a little insight. And it's one or two peoples on this board, mostly old ordinance, that might know something, it would be myself or Ms. Jackie Smith. And if you were to have a conversation either with me or Ms. Jackie, I'm pretty sure she would have told you that it was just for those big old tractor trailer trucks, it wasn't anything, yeah. So we can pay Patrick to go and, more money to go out here and say, oh, and give him more money, or we can just go back and look at the ordinance for less money and see exactly what it says, or possibly, if you don't take my word for it, ask somebody else. And that's all it was, to park those big trucks in the back of the yards, and give everybody who you have given a ticket to, those smaller trucks, to give them their money back. Thank you.
Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to basically talk about an amendment of Commissioner Cowan's motion, but I think Patrick kind of clarified that as well, so I really didn't have a question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cowan?
Okay, so I will withdraw my motion, and I guess you will withdraw your second. And I guess everybody knows what to do now, right? Okay.
Thank you.
Chairman, the next item on the agenda is item number nine A that was added, Consideration and Approval of the Second Amendment to Contract of the Sale Between the City of Covington and Newton Land Investments.
Thank you. Mr. Joxetter?
Chairman, Board, as you may recall, in January of 2002, the county entered into an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Covington with respect to the jointly-owned property that is kind of known as the Newton Covington Industrial Park property. That intergovernmental agreement authorized the city to manage, market, and sell property on behalf of the county and the city. It was specifically addressed a 35-plus-or-minus acre parcel that was to be sold to Newton Land Investments. After the sale of that property, the proceeds would be split between the city and the county. The board approved that, that intergovernmental agreement in January of 2002. Since then, the city and Newton Land Investments have revised the contract and have reduced the area to be sold from 35 acres to 11 acres. Brian, could you put up the, it's the, that one? So on the screen is the original property that was subject to the initial agreement, and if you'll, just to orient you, north on that property is straight up, and the parcel of property, the 35 acres, is sort of the upside-down L-shaped property, it fronts Highway 142, goes back and sort of looks like an upside-down L. The new contract, Brian, if you could put the other plat up, that's right, the new contract has reduced the amount of property to be sold to 11 acres, which is the 11 acres at the end of that little bulb with the cul-de-sac. So instead of 35 acres, it's now that smaller 11-acre portion. The City of Covington has approved the amendment to the contract, and has approved the 11 acres to be sold rather than the entire 35 acres. The intergovernmental agreement arguably provides the City of Covington that authority, but we want this board to go ahead and authorize and ratify that action, so that the city can proceed with that sale. Upon closing of the sale, the proceeds will be divided between the city and the county. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll familiar with this particular piece of property, and I'd like to make a motion to approve exactly what the county attorney had stated.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
It was a motion by Commissioner Henderson and seconded by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, we have the next item on the agenda is item number 10, also by Mr. Patrick Mr. Chair, we have the next item on the agenda is item number ten, also by Mr. Patrick Joxstetter, our county attorney. Finance seeking approval of resolution R. zero-two-zero-seven-two-three.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening again. As you are all aware, back in August of two thousand and two, this board authorized, authorized the SPOLOST measure to be placed on the ballot. And in November of two thousand and twenty-two, the voters of Newton County, Georgia, approved the extension of the SPOLOST. And together with the approval of the imposition of the SPOLOST tax, the voters of the county also approved the issuance of general obligation debt by the county in an amount up to twenty-four million, nine-hundred thousand dollars. In order to proceed with the issuance of that debt, this board and the Board of Elections both have to formally declare the results of the election, such that we have formally acknowledged that this SPOLOST referendum has passed. This is step one in the process to issue the bonds. Here tonight is Mr. Roger Murray, who you all know as Bond Counsel. He's been doing this work for Newton County for a number of years. This is, and we are in the early stages. We'll proceed relatively quickly after you approve this resolution tonight, and we'll be back in front of you in the relative near future to issue the debt, and we'll, at that point, be able to describe to you the products, projects that we anticipate to finance. So, what I need tonight is us a resolution, approval of the resolution to declare the results of the election.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a motion, please? Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that we approve, seeking the approval of resolution R. zero-two-zero-seven-two-three, which is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Newton County declaring the results of an election determining the continuation of a one percent sales and use tax and the issuance of general obligation debt by Newton County and for other related purposes.
Can I get a second, please? It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. End of discussion? Commissioner Sanders?
Patrick, I'm glad you're standing up here. Can you explain, because I had this question asked to me from SPOLOST, people on the SPOLOST Committee, and those who have sent it to me, and also I got this from ACCG. Can you explain about SPOLOST dollars and nonprofits? I want to make sure before I vote that I'm voting correctly in regards to SPOLOST dollars being given to nonprofits.
Well, the SPOLOST law requires that all of your SPOLOST funds be built for capital projects or be submitted for capital projects. You cannot use SPOLOST funds to fund operations. You can only use SPOLOST for capital projects. Capital projects, in order to be a capital project that's authorized to be funded through SPOLOST, it must be either owned or operated by the county. So, there are limitations. Now, that doesn't mean that, you know, SPOLOST funds could be used to build a building that ultimately houses a nonprofit, provided it's performing a governmental or quasi-governmental service. But the funds aren't, aren't, not unlike your ARPA funds where you can give ARPA funds to fund operations of nonprofits, you can't do that with SPOLOST dollars. SPOLOST dollars are limited to capital outlay projects. In other words, you've got to build something, whether it's a road, a building, something like that. You have to build something.
So, for clarity, the funding for SPOLOST, which basically in the SPOLOST law, you cannot give that, the funding to nonprofits.
That's right. You can't hand a check over to a nonprofit entity.
So, Patrick, can you please explain how we do our SPOLOST project that, like, people like, say Nelson Heights and Washington Street, how the county go in and, like, I think Commissioner Henderson, then you have, like, a bathroom and, no, no. So, when you're saying giving money to nonprofits.
I can explain that. I'm not sure that's the question, but I...
We have some nonprofits on the SPOLOST that we're providing funding to that's on the SPOLOST referendum. And so, the constituents have been asking me questions about it, and I did call ACCG, and they gave me the clarification. It's also on our website that funding cannot be given to nonprofits. So, I want to make sure for me, voting, that I'm not doing something wrong.
Absolutely not. So, there...
Like Newton Trails, can you explain that?
Right. So, the, so, I don't want to dive into a million detail, a million specific examples, but for instance, the county-owned facility where Nelson Heights operates, that's a county-owned facility. If we engage in a capital project on that county-owned facility, that's an appropriate SPOLOST expenditure as provided it is a county-owned facility and it is a capital project. So, building a bathroom, expanding a building, adding gazebos and things like that, those are capital expenditures, and provided it's on county-owned property, it's totally acceptable. There's been an issue recently regarding a park improvement that was on the previous SPOLOST, and there's been a request by a nonprofit that says, "Give us our money." Well, we can't give them money. We can fund a capital project, and if it happens to be for the park that they're operating on, that's acceptable, but we can't write a nonprofit check out of SPOLOST.
And now, can you please elaborate on Newton Trails and how they can get SPOLOST dollars from the county?
Right. So, Newton Trails, again, is, it's property owned or operated by a governmental entity, and as long as the trail project is our project, we can fund our project. So, it's a matter of whether it's a capital project or not a capital project is really what it boils down to. So, again, we're not writing, we're not going to hand money over to any entity. We can fund capital projects, and that's what we would be doing.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any more questions?
I feel like it was a law school exam. I hope I passed.
I want to make sure I'm voting correctly, so I will ask questions.
We did get a motion. All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, the next item on the agenda is item number eleven. Our presenter is going to be Director Brittany White. Finance seeking approval of memorandum of understanding between Newton County and Newton Trails regarding the county dispersing the condemnation funds to be utilized for renovation of the Alcovee River Bridge.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening.
Great job with the finances as well.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Tonight, we have an MOU before you that is, it's regarding a condemnation, a federal condemnation case where we received funding back in May. We received a hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-five cents. The legality of that case, Patrick could probably explain that a little bit better than myself. But ultimately, the county owns property on Cricket Frog Trail, and that is where the condemnation funds came from. So, we are seeking approval to turn over the hundred and ten thousand dollars that the county received to Newton Trails, since Newton Trails is the ones who operate the facility. And then, that would be to cover the Alcovee River Bridge project.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This time, I'd like to make a motion to approve an MOU between Newton County and Newton County Trails regarding the county dispersing the condemnation funds to be utilized for renovation of the Alcovee River Bridge.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. End of discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much.
Chairman, the next item we have on the agenda is item number twelve for iParametrics. Our presenter is Ms. Kennedy Shannon. It's an update on the old ARPA program. We also added the discussion of the one million-dollar commissioners allocation, as well as the fifteen thousand for Pastor Lett and ARPA funds for salaries to be added to number twelve.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chairman.
So, let me make one correction. So, we didn't amend the agenda to add the fifteen thousand, but Commissioner Henderson did ask to speak on that at that time, so just want to make sure we do it right. Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. Great. How is everyone?
Great. How you doing?
Awesome. So, I'm here today to give you guys an update. I want to do mortgage rental assistance and utility assistance last, because there's some things we need to get the commission to agree to for that program. So, as far as the youth commission is concerned, we are in the final stages of building out that application. I've had communication with some members of the commission, including Commissioner Saunders, and we took your recommendations and put that into the final version. So, the application will be online. It will allow the youth to apply. Depending on the district that they live in, it will send that application to that commissioner so that each commissioner will see the youth in their district and will be able to make a selection from those youth and make that appointment. The application will consist of general information. There's a five-hundred-word essay that has to be attached to the application to, for the youth to explain why they want to serve. There will be an opportunity for them to upload a copy of their report card, because there is a GPA requirement. There will also be an opportunity for them to upload any letters or recommendations from teachers or from clergy or from anybody in the community that wants to recommend that they serve. I anticipate that that can go live by next Friday as a start date for that, and we can talk about, I think we originally said we wanted to keep it open for thirty days so that the youth have an opportunity to go and apply for that. We can also do a blast, a social media blast, and then each of you can then blast to your districts to let the youth know in the community that this opportunity is available and that they can apply. So, that's what we got for the youth commission. Are any questions about that?
I do want to make sure we get it sent out in an email form.
Yep.
That way, everybody's putting out the same thing throughout the community.
Yeah. So, before it sends, it'll go all out to you at one time, so everybody has the same message, the same link. Everybody will get it at the same exact time, similar to how we did the emergency rental assistance program.
Okay. I'm not sure who had the hand up first, but Commissioner Sanders?
I just want to make sure, are you going to send it to the schools as well, to the PR person at the schools so they can blast it out to the schools?
We can definitely do that. Yep. If we know which schools we need to send it to, we can work with county staff to make sure that that information's also blasted out to the schools or any community centers.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the work that you're doing. How many kids can put in for the youth commission? How many, how many? Yeah, I mean...
So, my understanding is that there would be one appointee per district. If you want to change that, you can. You can have two appointees per district. Right now, you want four appointees per district? So, you'd have, it's up to you. The application doesn't discriminate. It's just going to filter to the applicants, and then you pick either two or four, however many you guys decide as a commission that you want representing each district and how big you want that youth commission to be.
Didn't we already decide on allocate funds for this?
We did allocate funds for this.
With them working within those funds, how many do you recommend that we...
So, my understanding from the funds that we allocated, I think we put fifty thousand into it as a line item. And if we did it based on, I think I did the math based on like five, one appointee per district, and each person would get a four thousand dollar. So, they'd get a hundred and fifty dollar stipend every meeting for twelve months, and then the rest would be used, as Commissioner Saunders suggested, for field trips, different type of events that they can go to other youth commissions and see or invite other people here and maybe have a summit of some sort. But if you want to increase that, we can. I mean, I think two appointees per, that would be a ten-person youth commission. I think that's pretty standard. I think four would be kind of big. That's a lot. But if you did two per commission, I think that would give you a ten-person, including two appointees for the chairman.
Yeah. So, if we do, if we do two and we stay, we can stay on our budget, because we don't want to short-change any of these kids on these field trips that we talking about doing. We want to make sure we have the appropriate money in there to allow them to do these field trips and other projects that we may deem necessary for them to do.
Well, you know, I think, I believe, excuse me, I believe in lieu of what we've been doing and how much money we've been, we've been giving consultants and stuff, I don't, I think four kids should be out of close, because, help me a little bit. I mean, since, you helped me.
I got you.
How much money are we paying you in order to help us get those kids? I think once it was four hundred thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm sorry?
Are we at four, are we at four hundred thousand dollars now, Ms. Kennedy?
Our contract can't exceed that amount, yeah.
Yes, what I'm saying. So, I think a little bit of money that we're talking about spending on our kids is little. You know, and that's, that's what kind of worries me to a certain, well, not worries me, concern me. Probably a better, a better word is concern me. It seems like we can just give everybody the whole store, and then it come back to our kids and our community. We say, "Oh..."
Well, I will say this if I can. One of my recommendations would be, I know we had originally put fifty thousand dollars in the bucket for gift cards for COVID vaccination. So, in reaching out to the director of E M Preparedness here, Mark, was it Reese Wick, his response was that he did not think that that program would go over very well, that there wouldn't be demand for it, and his recommendation would be that we could probably find a better way to spend that ARPA funding. So, that could potentially be another fifty thousand dollars that we move from that line item. He's of the opinion that most of the people who have gotten vaccinated have gotten vaccinated, and those that have not are doing so on principle, and fifty dollars won't change principle. So, that was his recommendation, not to mention the fact that there was some staffing issues about how we would be able to handle that internally, where people coming and showing proof of vaccination, getting the gift cards, who's going to sign them out? The health department just doesn't have the staff to do that. So, based on that, my recommendation would be to you all is to scrap that and maybe move that funding into the youth commission, which would then allow you to expand it to four youth per commissioner.
Commissioner Sanders?
I agree with that. And the reason why I said four when I wrote it and submitted it to you, it was four kids, and they were getting like a certain amount that's not as, they're not high as...
Yeah, they was getting like one fifty per meeting. I changed it.
And so, that's where the four came from. If you look at the other commissions, they actually have four per district. If you look at the others in other counties, it's about twenty kids that are on the district. So, it makes a little bit more, allows more kids to be on it versus us looking at twenty, fifty applications. I don't know how many going to submit, and we got to pick one.
I completely agree with you. I agree with you. I think the more kids that can participate in the civil service, the better. So, whatever you all think logistically as a commission you guys can handle, then I think you should go in that direction. But I can find the money from the COVID program to make it work for those additional four.
And how it came about, it was one, one child per grade, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth. That's why it was four.
Okay. So, you can do it that way.
As long as we allocate the funds to support it, that's fine.
So, first and foremost, it would be you guys voting to scrap that program and then either move that money back to the pot or move it to the youth commission. And if we do that, then we'll have a hundred thousand in the youth commission line item, which should be more than enough to cover the number of youth that you're proposing, as well as have money for field trips and things like that.
So, I want to use chairman privilege tonight to amend the agenda to ask for a motion to do that now.
So, move as stated by the chairman.
Thank you. Can I get a second? It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Mason. End of discussion? All in favor? It passes. So, it's a hundred thousand dollars in that budget now.
So, I'll move accordingly with that and redo that based on that. That won't affect the go-live date, just so you know.
And we're looking at four kids per...
Four. Absolutely. Okay. Next is nonprofit and small business assistance. So, nonprofit will be the next one to drop, the next program to drop. That should be able to go live next Friday, too. So, nonprofit will consist of three programs and one application. That is general nonprofit assistance, which will be assistance based on the loss of revenue that a nonprofit shows as a result of COVID. The other part of that will be youth nonprofit program. That's where the nonprofit has to show that they have an existing youth program. They can tell us what they want to use the money for, and they have to present a budget, and they can ask, I think, for up to fifty thousand on that one, I believe. It's either fifty or thirty. And then, the third one is the food security grant program. That is one for existing food banks. They have to tell us what they want to do with it, submit a budget.
Only, I thought it was for those that want to start up a food bank as well.
So, actually, Commissioner Edwards had changed it, and he said he only wanted to focus on existing food pantries. He did not want it to focus on new food pantry. So, I think we changed that, if my understanding is correctly. Correct? Is it?
Okay.
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 So, that's the criteria for that.
So, again, I'm going to ask that you put this in the email so that...
All of it will go out to you all. So, how I usually do it is I send it to the chairman and county manager. Then they send it to you guys, to the group, so that everything will go out in the same message, the same marketing with that. So, a nonprofit potentially who does, who has a loss in revenue, who does youth programming and has a food pantry, could potentially get up to the max of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars per nonprofit, assuming that they max out of each of those categories. The top, the one category, assistance to nonprofit, is dependent upon the income that they can show that they lost related to COVID. So, they have to show their nine-nineties. So, if they show their two thousand, twenty, twenty-nine, ninety, and they made a hundred thousand, and their twenty-twenty-one nine-ninety says they made fifty thousand, they have a reduction of fifty thousand in income, they can get a grant for fifty thousand. they can get a grant for fifty thousand. So it has to be proportionate to their loss of income as it relates to COVID.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Edwards and then Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So on item C of number twelve, how do we introduce a, a motion that requires any nonprofit or small business based in Newton County applying for this ARPA money? That they have a valid business license in Newton County or in, or a municipality within Newton County?
So to clarify that, our recommendation already includes that. So we're already building a program with that as a requirement. As it relates to nonprofit, they have to have a 501(c)(3) status and they have to current on their nine nineties. That's a requirement. And as it relates to small business, there will be a requirement that you have a business license, either from the state or from the county or from the city, but some level of business license.
I mean, I, I mean, if you want a motion, I can, I'll do a motion if you want to do a motion.
I'd like to make a motion they have a Newton County, valid Newton County business license or within a municipality of Newton County.
So wait a minute, so let me, let's make sure we do it right. I'm going to use chairman's privilege tonight to amend the agenda. Commissioner Edwards, if you want to make your motion now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This time I'd like to make a motion that any nonprofit or small business applying for Newton County ARPA money, that's federal money via Newton County, that they have a valid business license in, within, in Newton County or the municipality within Newton County before they can apply.
Is there a second please?
Sure.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and seconded by Commissioner Cowan. End of discussion. I'm going to do Commissioner Henderson first. Did I, Commissioner, go ahead.
No, 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 you're the first. No.
Commissioner Sanders.
I'm not in agreeance with that. I agree with what you stating because if they are registered with the state of Georgia, which is only, the only requirement is to be registered, have an operating business in the state of Georgia, to be registered with the state of Georgia. It's not a requirement. Now, I know Newton County has some COVID, but that is not a requirement to operate a business. And the reason why I don't agree with that, maybe eventually that business can become, have a permit in Newton County. But you're going to eliminate so many businesses that are in need right now. Right now, this ARPA funds is to help, not to hinder. Unless we're going to offer a discount or we're going to throw away the permit process, a discount to get a permit for those businesses, because if they're hurting and they're trying to go seek dollars for this fund, from this ARPA fund and they have to go get a permit, then that's kind of contradictory. So I, I, it's going to be eliminated a lot of businesses because a lot of businesses are not required to have a permit in Newton County.
So we've seen it done both ways. We've seen some communities that want a local business license because they encourage businesses to apply for those local business licenses. And as a result, they want to require it. And we've seen it otherwise where the client is saying, well, no, as long as they have something from the state or the city that authorizes them to conduct the business that they're conducting, as long as they have some business license of some sort from a legal entity, then it's okay. So again, it's at the discretion of you all what you want for your community, but I've seen it done both ways.
Hold on one second. Commissioner Henderson and then Commissioner Edwards.
Thank, thank you. Well, you know, I'll tell you what my concern is is I think when we first started this conversation, one of the first things that I remember you saying is, in fact, I may have you in my dreams saying the same thing. You said, you said, what about the underserved businesses, they would have, maybe not an advantage, but they.
Preference.
Yes. And I'm seeing what we're setting up now, they don't. In other words, if, if you in part of Newton, Covington, Newton County and you within the poverty range of twenty to thirty percent of other people in, in Newton County who are in poverty, who's trying to have a business going, then we cutting them out. And that was not what those funds was intended for. They was intended to help the underserved people in the underserved community. And I think the way we set it up, you're going to bypass even them because they're going to say, well, I can't get it because, oh, you know, you got all these stipulations and stuff. And they're not going to qualify for it. And I think if you look at, when you start doing this, there'd be more people who will receive those funds than the people who actually need them. And so I think that, I think, once again, you know, I said this, excuse me, I don't say it too often. We're going backwards again instead of moving forward. The whole idea was to give somebody a hand up, to help the people who are in need, to help the ones who are hungry, not make it so hard and so difficult that they had to go over here to First Methodist Church over here in Covington. It'd be four or five hundred people lining up to get a box of food once a month. But you got to eat what, about twenty-five, thirty days a month. So what are you going to do the other days, other five days, ten days, fifteen days in a month when the food run down? If they don't have anything to eat. So that's why we wanted to make sure that the people, especially in my opinion, that churches would be able to give people food who needs it, to help the childrens in the community who needs it. And let us not forget about the peoples who are really in need.
I understand. We're still giving preference for small business. If they live in a qualified census tract, they'll still get preference. Now, as far as the preference of the license or not, that, that's not on me. That's on you all, so.
Thank you. Commissioner, uh, Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm not sure who this is the question for, maybe Patrick or the county, our county manager. Is it a requirement in Newton County, if you have a business in Newton County, is it a requirement that you have a business license in Newton County, if your business is based in Newton County?
So as a general rule, yes. As a general rule, you are required to pay an occupational tax in the county. Now, there are some businesses that may have multiple locations and they would not necessarily have to pay for a separate one in every jurisdiction, every county in which they operate. But as a general rule, just ignoring ARPA for a moment, as a general rule, that's, that is a requirement for businesses operating within the county.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders. Yeah, we're going to call this to a vote after this comes.
And just to make that clear, that's not a requirement from the Department of Treasury for ARPA. Just want to make that clear. Also, I know you mentioned how are we going to identify those individuals who maybe applied for assistance elsewhere or for government funding before? Because I mean, we talked about that, about those may have done the PPP, I don't know, whatever. Some have got grants before.
We ask on the application if they've received other federal funding. Honestly, it's the honor system. I mean, PPP data is, is public, so we can check. So if they say no, they haven't gotten PPP, we can see that because it's public data. But if they got another type of grant from somewhere else, it won't bar them from getting this assistance because PPP was kind of further in the pandemic and this is now, so there's no duplication of benefit. So the federal government won't let you, what they call double dip, or get a grant from one federal source and another federal source for the same type of activity in the same timeframe. So the timeframe that we're covering is different than what PPP would have covered, so there won't be a duplication of benefit. We've had some communities say, if you got a PPP loan, you can't get ARPA. We've had some communities say, if you got a PPP loan or any of the CARES Act funds, you can't get ARPA because we want to give the other businesses an opportunity to get it. So that would be up to you all if you want to limit people who receive PPP from being able to get this funding. Or at least put those who didn't get PPP ahead of those who did in the processing.
I agree, I agree with that. And then if we, we're looking to, for those businesses who may not have the license here in Newton County, why don't we do, work with our Chamber of Commerce and do a business drive to make sure they have the permit? But I don't think they should be limited for applying for these funds right now if they are definitely in need. And then you said it also goes to certain census tracts first, right?
Yes, qualified census tracts.
And that's District Three and Four.
Predominantly, yes. Thank you.
All in favor? Guys, we got to call for the, go, go ahead, Commissioner, go ahead.
I understand that. Well, hey, but I should have the opportunity.
You had the opportunity.
And if we live in old times where you just said, shut up, I should have the opportunity just asking one last question for me.
Go ahead.
In, in, in. Well, my question is this, is that I have had a constituent to call me and he said that on the application, it said that if you had a PPP loan, you was ineligible. So I guess had the application went out with that on it or are we going to change it some part?
There has been no application gone out for small business. So I don't know what application they're speaking of.
Well, my message to him, if he's listening, is that you can apply for it.
Yeah, unless you guys rule, unless you guys vote that PPP is exclusionary, it is not that way right now.
We, no, no, we, we trying to make up stuff as we go. I'm calling for, all in favor? Any opposed? It passes three, two.
So we require a Newton business license for small business, okay. Do nonprofits also require that license? Or is it just small business? Do we know? Nonprofits too? Gotcha. All right, one other thing. So I've got about four things that we need to get straightened out so that we can get this going. As, and since we're on nonprofit assistance, as well as small business, do we want to allow home-based small businesses and home-based nonprofits? Or do they have to be in a brick and mortar? We've had multiple communities say they want to do non-home-based and only brick and mortar. We have some that say they want to do home-based businesses and home-based nonprofits, so.
Home-based.
Home-based for both.
Definitely, yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, so now let's get to mortgage, rental and utility assistance. This is where I need some guidance from you all. We have currently two hundred and forty-nine applications in the system. We have seen a plethora of different applicants come in from one end of the spectrum to the other end of the spectrum. We had someone apply and their rent was six thousand dollars a month. They lived in a million-dollar house and they wanted back rent. Clearly, they're not eligible. That's not what this program is for. That being said, we need to talk about whether or not we want to enforce an affordability aspect. So a lot of the applicants that are applying for assistance frankly cannot afford the units that they're in. And even if we bail them out and pay their back rent, they don't have the income going forward to not fall back in the hole of back rent. So the question then becomes, do we have some type of affordability aspect where we say, you know, based on the applicant, the most that they can spend towards their rent is eighty percent of their income? Anything over eighty percent of their income would be ineligible because it wouldn't be affordable. And I say eighty percent because I've had, I've had the gamut. I've had a woman who gets social security who makes nine eighty in social security every month, but her rent is eight hundred a month. She was only behind one month. You know, and she only had a hundred and eighty dollars left after, but she was able to pay her rent with her social security. Conversely, I've had people apply whose rent is fifteen hundred dollars a month and they only showing seven hundred dollars a month in income. So even after we pay the arrears, how are you going to pay the rent going forward? And what's going to prevent you from getting behind and then being evicted? And it's kind of like throwing, throwing good money after, after bad money. So we need to have some level, some lit, mis test for affordability. You know, are some people going to get up under the line and above the line? But because we have so many applicants, we need to have a bright line rule of either you're under eighty percent of your income or you're over eighty percent of your income and you're not eligible because otherwise we're doing it on a case-by-case basis and it is slowing up the process to have the case managers literally working these cases one by one. So that's one issue we need to address is whether or not we want to have an affordability requirement. The second is.
So can you tell us how, and I, and we got.
So my, yeah, my recommendation would be eighty percent.
Okay, so for the ones that's already been approved, how you handling that?
We've been, we've been working on that eighty percent number for the ones that have been approved for the most part. Kind of, because we thought that that was arbitrarily fair. But we wanted to come to you to get something hard and concrete because without guidance from you, we don't know which way to go as it relates to affordability.
Okay.
So we said eighty percent. HUD for Section Eight requires, you know, thirty percent of your income. So by us going up eighty percent, we're going to the top. Like we're saying, eighty percent of your income can go towards rent. And we'll pay that back rent and go forward. But anything over eighty percent calls into question how you will be able to pay your rent going forward. That being said, in instances where we find someone who's in a unit that they can't afford, we would like to be able to offer them the option to move to a unit that is affordable and provide them with a security deposit and first month's rent. So we're not just leaving them out there and saying, you're unaffordable, we can't help you. We give you thirty days to go find a unit that's affordable. Once you find that unit, we'll pay your security deposit and first month's rent, put you on the path. It's a cheaper option than paying back rent, but then it also gives us the lifeline to help those individuals. So that's what we propose we do if they're, if they're at that particular point.
Patrick, do we need a motion to put that in play?
Yes, I think you'll need that. It's, is, are there more things that they need to vote? Should we do these one at a time or do you?
Uh, we can do it collectively. The other is, right now, we do six.
Let's, let's, let's do it, let's do it.
Okay, let's do it one at a time. Let's cross these bridges as we get here. Okay, let's do that one.
So I'm going to use chairman's privilege again tonight to amend the agenda to add that is, can I get someone to make a motion? That's, that's, that's great. That's great that you're doing that. Can I get someone to make a motion, please?
So moved by our consultant has stated, I can't repeat it verbatim, but so moved what she stated.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Sanders and seconded by Commissioner Mason. End of discussion. Commissioner Henderson.
I'm sorry, I just had a question. Just got a question running. The question that I, that I have is that the other company that we had distributing money, there was, what I read in the paper, it was about three hundred thousand dollars that had been taken. All we, is, have that been, the money that we recruit, had that been put back into that budget?
So it was four hundred and eighty-three thousand and yes, it has been returned. So it's back in our bank account.
Thank you. End of more discussion. Commissioner Sanders.
Not discussion, I want to thank you for adding that because we've had some constituents recently because of our housing crisis. We do have a housing crisis in Newton County. We got to establish that. We have one. We got to do something about it, commissioners. People cannot afford their rent. So we got to do something. I've been saying it for a year. But we, I'm, thank you so much for bringing that forth because that's been an issue because the new requirements of having a certain amount of deposit down, your first month rent and all that, they cannot afford it. So thank you so much. I appreciate that.
No problem.
Thank you. Again, I need that sent to us in the email.
Absolutely. Gotcha. Okay. Next is right, oh, do what you go.
Yeah, we need to go. Oh, I'm sorry. Can I get, all in favor? It passed five oh.
Awesome. Next, so right now we're doing six months of rental arrears and then we take them two months forward. And for mortgage assistance, we're doing three months of mortgage arrears and one month forward. The question is, do you want to put mortgage on parity with rent? Do you want to pay six months of back mortgage and two months forward for mortgages too? The reason we defined it as three is because usually once you get three months behind, you're at risk of foreclosure.
Can you say that one more time?
Yes. So for rental assistance, we're doing six months back and two months forward for rent. Six months back, two months forward, for a total of eight months of assistance.
Okay.
For mortgage assistance, we're doing three months back and one month forward. So we're getting you out of foreclosure territory by paying those three months you owe, plus one month to give you a breather and then you got to take over for yourself at that point. They're not the same. Obviously renters get more assistance than mortgagers. The question is, do you want to keep it that way or do you want mortgagers to be able to get six months back mortgage payments just like renters do?
Sure.
I didn't, I didn't, is there a program to where people who have homes can live in their house six months without paying? I thought after three months.
Let me tell you something, Commissioner, I'm seeing people with, that's my next question. That's my next question. It's people with eleven months, twelve months, nine months of back rent. Yes.
Okay, so for the rent, and I heard you say eight months of rent.
Total, six months back, two months forward.
You're educating me right now because I didn't know that landlords were allowing people to stay in the homes eight months back unless there's a federal, still a federal mandate in place.
It's a lot of them. We getting a lot of them. And to, to piggyback on that, because it's part of it, we're, we're finding people where six months back doesn't cure the arrears. So they still owe something. So our question is, do we pay what we can and then just leave them with the rest? Because they can't pay the rest either. So it's like, if they, if they're eight months behind and we can only do six months behind, that leaves a balance. And unless the landlord is willing to accept our assistance as full payment of the arrears, meaning they're willing to waive any additional, then that tenant would ultimately be on the hook for that. And if the tenant's saying they can't afford it, I mean, we're paying money and then the landlord could potentially still evict them because there's still two months due. So, you know, I'm of the opinion if the six months won't clear it, then we give them the option to move and maybe offer them a first month's security.
My, my only, excuse me, my only concern is paying the eight months. What if somebody's rent is twelve hundred, then you have, it's probably lessing the amount. You can give somebody who needs it for three months. You see what I'm saying? Because that funding is going all to, and it's not being heartless because I very much care. I was the one who really was for this rental mortgage and utility assistance. But I'm just worried about the, I didn't know, you just educated me, you can go, people were still in their homes for that long.
And, and we use fair market value, rental value, and that's designated by HUD. So, you know, if it's a family of eight and they're in a four-bedroom, you know, we can pay twenty-six hundred a month, times six. So, you know, if it's a family of eight and they're in a four-bedroom, you know, we can pay twenty-six hundred a month times six back rent. So, you know, it, it adds up a lot. You know, we're seeing modest rent amounts for the most part. We have seen the outliers, like I said, where the guy had six thousand dollars a month, lived in a million-dollar house and thought we was going to pay his back rent. And I told him that's just not going to happen, sir. You know, or we had situations where somebody paid thirty-five hundred dollars a month rent and she had seven hundred dollars worth of income. So it's like, well, ma'am, how are you paying your rent? Well, what you see on my tax form ain't really my income. Well, that's what we got to go off of because if you don't tell it to Uncle Sam, I can't use it. So that's kind of what we're up against, but. The question is, do we allow, if we can't cure the arrears, meaning our six months won't cure it, do we then say, look, we can't pay the back rent in total, we give them the option to move and help them with the first month's security? That's two months, it's cheaper. That, that's what I'm asking for clarity on.
Okay. I mean, we helping, we, I mean, that's what we doing, we helping people, so. Oh, okay, my bad, I'm sorry, Commissioner Cal, my bad.
Just, are you going to negotiate with the banks or with the landlords regarding the arrears? If you're not able to cure it all?
So what we do is we contact the landlord and we say, look, this is what we can pay. Are you willing to waive the difference? And most landlords are saying no.
Okay, what about the banks?
So the banks are definitely saying no. So we go to the banks and tell them.
So if somebody's beyond six months, and let's say they're nine months behind, you could pay six months of money and then the bank foreclose on it. And then the bank says, thank you very much for catching us up almost and now we're foreclosed. And then they go sue them for the difference anyway.
Exactly.
Um, I don't like that.
Yeah, I don't either. So that's why I'm asking your permission.
Uh, my opinion would be, you've got to make a decision if it's going to be, if it's beyond a certain point, I would say go to six months. Uh, if it's longer than that, just say, look, we're not going, we're not going to win this argument with the landlord or with the bank, whatever the situation is. And we're not going to throw good money after bad because it's just money out the door, the bank makes their, makes it, they flip the property and sell it to somebody's courthouse steps.
Yes.
I don't like that.
So I don't either. And in that case, I would like to offer that person to say, hey, we can't help you, but if you move to someplace affordable, we will pay your first month's security, which is two months of assistance.
I like that better.
I don't, you, I don't want you to just be able to apply off the rip for first month's security. That is only offered to you if it's determined that we can't cure your arrears or you're in a unit that you can't afford. That will only be the time we offer that as an option. It won't be an option that people can just apply for their first month's security and, and deposit to, to move into a new place. That won't be an application option. It will be only a service option to those two categories that I just described.
So you need a time certain, six months, eight months, whatever, and any day beyond that.
We can't help you. You're too far behind, yeah.
Okay, all right, have we established that yet?
I would like you to vote to establish that.
Okay, all right, so that's part of what we need to vote.
That's what you vote now, yep.
All right, I'm good with six months, I don't know about the rest of y'all, but most banks ain't going to go much further than that anyway.
Okay, so I'm going to use Chairman's point of privilege to amend the agenda. Commissioner Cal, would you like to make that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that, uh, for the purposes of ARPA funding, as it applies to mortgages and leases, if a person is beyond six months, uh, that we do not catch that up, that we do offer the money forward to help them relocate.
Is there a second? There's been motion by Commissioner Cal, went in second by Commissioner Sanders, any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. I do have to ask you a question.
Yes.
One of the biggest questions that we've been getting, and I'm sure that you may know who these people are because I haven't seen applications, I know you have. If the leasing, if the leasing offices, if the leasing office is unable to provide their personal identification number to you guys, what is an alternative?
What you mean, a personal identification number? I'm confused by that.
So they're saying that they have to show their personal identification number?
So what we.
And, and they're saying that some places it's against their policy to, um, provide that information? I don't know why, but.
So the only thing we ask of landlords is they have to provide a W nine, they have to show proof of ownership of the property.
So their W nine will have that on there?
The W nine has to have it on there. We can't cut them out of a payment without their federal tax ID number or their social security number. So if they have an issue with that, then they can't get paid.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
So I think that's all I had for recommendations or try to get clarity. No, one, I'm sorry, one last thing.
Okay.
Nonprofit assistance. So we plan on doing general nonprofit assistance based on reduction of revenue as a single payment. Because that is a grant we're giving to the nonprofit in response to their reduction of revenue, right? But for the other two, it will be reimbursement-based. So for food pantry, youth programming, it will be reimbursement-based. They will submit receipts to us on a monthly basis. They would get reimbursed based on the budget and the program description that they put in their application. But for the general nonprofit assistance, that will be a single payment made to the nonprofit in a check because that is based off of clear treasury guidelines of reduction of revenue based on their nine-nineties. And that doesn't have to be reimbursed.
So I got a quick question about the food pantry. So we're not doing startup food pantry, is that correct?
Correct, they have to be existing.
Okay, so, um, and I, and I, I don't, I forget what you said. I think you said that they can utilize that money to build, build, build the pantry and span on it.
So if they're an existing food pantry, and so we've seen like existing food pantries are building these things that kind of look like grocery stores. So people don't feel like they getting a handout, you know, they can go in and actually shop. They get assigned points as a family and they can go pick the items they want. So that would be something that this grant could be used live for, building something like that out, buying refrigeration equipment, buying food, but it all has to tie back to the food service or providing some type of service in that category.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
And lastly, before you go, um, so I know you heard Pastor Lepp when she came up.
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson wanted to, um, see how can we use ARPA funds to continue to February the eighth? I think it was fifteen thousand dollars is what needed. Can you talk to us about that?
That's an allowable use. If you wanted to extend her assistance fifteen thousand in order to allow her to operate to the end of February to cover payroll, that would be something that ARPA would allow if you voted for it.
I want to take this opportunity to use Chairman Privilege tonight, um, to make that part of the agenda. Commissioner Henderson, if you want to make that, this opportunity, you can do it at this point.
Well, thank you. And, um, I'm also, um, wanting to put back on the agenda the million dollars for each commissioner so we can do, do a vote to as well.
We'll do that next.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, um, to approve the, the motion that the chairman made for the fifteen thousand dollars for the shelter.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson, the second by Commissioner Mason, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, it passes.
So to address the, the million dollar question, my understanding was that you all voted to take the million dollars away from each commissioner, put it back into a pot and establish the programs that we currently have. That was my understanding. Am I, am I mistaken?
We did, but, yep, Commissioner Mason, go ahead.
We gave it back to her.
That was in the same one where we raised the amount for nonprofit assistance and we raised, put another million dollars in there. That was the, the, the trade-off of the conversation we had about that.
That's correct. That is exactly what we did. But it doesn't negate that those that we already have selected cannot apply.
Correct.
They can still go in and apply for this particular program.
Correct. They meet the definition of a nonprofit, they have a reduced revenue, yeah. Unless you want to prevent them from applying, that would be your prerogative, but there's nothing currently.
We want them to still be able to apply because we've already allocated some funds to them. So we want to still be able to allow them to apply for this new program.
There's nothing preventing that currently, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If, if I could just make a comment, question, I guess. Well, if we did that, somebody, please give me a copy because I don't remember voting on that. I remember we voted on for each commissioner to have a million dollars. And I think in order to come back and say, you're not going to do it, it shouldn't have been something that was, um, somewhat eased on in without a, a straight vote saying no, saying that we, the commissioners, uh, don't want the commissioners to have that million dollars. It should have been the same up or down vote that was given, when it was given, it should have been the same up or down vote that y'all did, when y'all took it away from the commissioners. In lieu of, thank Commissioner Calvin, that spent, you correct me if I'm wrong, he spent a million, a dollars, close to a million dollars on the courthouse. And Commissioner Edwards spent money on, on the other. So all I think, what I'm saying is, and that's typical of this commission, it is that we, we agree on one thing and we'll come back and figure out a way not to do it and don't make it public for what you're doing. So, uh, I guess, uh, Patrick, you tell me, since you're the lawyer, when did we do that? And what was the vote? And how was it stated back to the commission so that we could vote on it?
Well, I don't have the kind of memory that lets me recite all those details. But when you reacap, when you reallocated ARPA funds and gave I parametrics, the marching orders to go forward with the program, you did in fact reallocate that five million dollars into the money that she was authorized to distribute. So that, that vote has been done.
Well, I hear what you're saying, what the vote has been done, but it was not did right, Patrick. And you as the county attorney was supposed to make clear that if we were doing something different, and I, I believe I've been up in every meeting, that, uh, it wasn't did, turned all the way in the way that everybody would have known. It was kind of did, uh, not right.
If, if my memory.
It was not did right.
My memory is.
If, if I may, Miss Kennedy.
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am, I may finish. That's the problem that I have with this board, they do stuff to you. And then it's about like we used to do when we were childrens. They would, we all get a rock, stand behind a bus and throw it, hit Ronnie Cow outside the head and he wouldn't know where it came from. And then everybody sees it, Ronnie says, somebody hit me, I said, well, I didn't do it. And so that's what we're doing to the citizens of New County. Who best knows what their constituent need than the commissioners? You give, you make a vote and you don't keep your word. Okay, so you said, well, that makes it just be one, hey, when we did, um, about the, uh, the funding for Juneteenth Day, just twelve hundred dollars. You made a vote one week and you came back the next two weeks and you rescinded it. That's the way you should have did this vote. I'm not even saying that's right. But one thing I can say about me, I'm talking about me, I'm not going to lie to you and I'm not going to do stuff on the hand to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cal.
Um, I guess you're through with your.
Yes.
Okay. We talked about the housing assistance or rehabilitation of housing that is allowed under ARPA. Where are you at on the guidelines for that?
For senior home repair, so we have senior home repair and low-income home repair and we'll have small business assistance. The plan is to roll both of those out in March, March, April. We didn't want to roll all these programs out at one time. One, because it would put a strain on your financial system because Brittany's cutting all these checks, all these rental checks, all these landlord checks, utility checks. So we, we've, we've started with the most pressing ones, which were, which I thought were rental assistance and nonprofits were the one that I heard were the most pressing. And then once those, you know, as rental assistance starts to taper off, we've got nonprofit and then we'll roll into small business assistance. Then we'll roll into senior and low-income home repair, which I think home repair programs are better suited for warm weather, especially when you're getting roofs and stuff done like that. So it made sense to do that during that period of time. But yes, we are in the process of building out those systems, building out those eligibility criteria, application, and those will be distributed amongst the group just like all the other programs.
Is there a dollar amount cap on that?
So I believe for, um, small businesses, we said they can get up to twenty thousand or twenty-five thousand per small business, if memory serves me correct. And for the senior and low-income home repair, I thought it was up to fifteen thousand dollars per repair. And it had to be for things like roofing, HVAC, sidewalks or walkways for disabilities.
Plumbing, maybe.
Plumbing, windows, anything related to habitability and making the house habitable for individuals who are seniors or low-income homeowners.
Okay.
So we're covering renters and we're covering homeowners. Everybody's going to get a piece of ARPA.
Okay, one other question on that. Will we need to get a, uh, an assessment from a licensed contractor?
So it will require each person to get three bids from three contractors, they have to go with the lowest bid.
Got you.
Yes.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just to add to the previous conversation in regards to the million dollars, I think, um, when we actually made the decision, you as a consultant were not on board. Uh, and I think when you came on board, you were doing your best to try to help us make sure that we had a great program. And you stated that some of the things that maybe we had allocated would have been a conflict of interest.
Correct.
And you wanted to make sure that we didn't have.
Remove that.
We want to remove that conflict of interest so we can put it in a general bucket.
Absolutely.
So that those, um, entities that would have been a conflict of interest could still apply.
Absolutely, and they still can.
That's correct. So I, I just wanted to put that out there, we wanted to eliminate the comp, the potential conflict of interest that had been put, that could have potentially been put in place with the original way that we did it. So you wanted to remove that conflict of interest.
Make it a general, open, competitive process. That way it removes your personal decision of saying, you get ARPA money, but you don't.
That's correct.
Exactly.
Okay, so I just wanted to get clarity on that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That, that's all I got for now, I know we got, I got to come back up and admit.
Come on, guys, we got to move, we got to move, we got to move, we got to, we got to. Commissioner Sanders, go ahead, Commissioner Sanders, go ahead.
Well, every time I say something, you look at Commissioner Sanders.
No, she, she did.
He's joking.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Just let me, just let me say this. That was not the true reason that you, when we called you in, we talked to you, when you came up here, Miss Kennedy. What you said was, was that you go, your job, your purpose was to make sure that the projects that the commissioner had, you were to make sure they are, that they are, they're under Arthur funding, that we could do them. It wasn't to come up here and change it the way, um, my good friend was talking about commissioner. What he was talking, Commissioner Demone was talking about, it was to make sure that they were Arthur fund approved. And every for, everything that I had asked for, I gave, I gave you a list. I even gave one to you personally. I gave you the list and you looked at those and you said, well, yeah, they, they are Arthur funded. And so to come back the next week or two, a month and tell, and tell me or tell us that, uh, no, this is good, this is good project, Arthur funded. Said, but, uh, we don't want to do this way, said, because the people might talk. Well, people going to talk regardless of what you do. But most of that money was sent down was to help people who in the underserved community, the kids who are supposed to be tutored, to help them to get a teacher because the math scores were so, so low in the community, to help them, to help the children, to help the old folks. Like you said, with a roof, but some of them can't wait the summertime and then the roof need to put on there. To help with the plumbing, some of the people plumbing, light bills are so high, they can't wait the summertime. And so, you know, I think we, you know, at least myself personally, I'm the type of person, I just say what I say personally, that this counter still set, these people who look for the service, uh, they're not going to get it. And lastly, people, the old folks who can't do computers, what do, what do they come, go and put in for it? They can't use a computer. They don't got a phone number that they can call somebody and tell them about it.
So we actually have something on the agenda to ask for funding for computers so that we can have people go out and provide services to the seniors. So that's actually something that's on the agenda later on, I believe.
Yeah, thank you so much. Great, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Chairman, the next item we have on the agenda is item number thirteen. Our, um, we're actually going to have our director, Ms. Brittany White, come. It's the County Manager Finance ARPA Revenue Replacement Proposed Updates. It is time-sensitive. The funding source is ARPA, budgeted no, but a match yes for twenty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Thank you, thank you, Brittany.
We are seeking, um, just a slight change in the allocation for the revenue replacement project from the ARPA funds. So the first change would be to, um, switch the boom mower that we first originally requested in the ARPA funds that was in Public Works over to two tractors instead. The reason for this is Public Works has had a boom mower that's been on order since January twenty-twenty-two and it's still yet to come in. So to better utilize these funds and to quickly, um, get to utilizing these, they would like to request two additional tractors. So to better utilize these funds and to quickly um, get to utilizing these, they would like to request two additional tractors. And this will allow them to, excuse me, this will allow them to um, start a second mowing crew in the spring when mowing season starts. And then the second request, so that's a difference of forty thousand, it's actually forty thousand less than what their original quest, request was. The second um, request is for an additional sixty-five thousand for senior services vans. When they first got quotes on the vans, they were a hundred and five thousand. When we went to actually purchase the vans, they cost one forty-eight. So, the difference between the one oh five and the one forty-eight are the difference between the two ten and what they need for two seventy-five is the sixty-five, two fifty-five. So the net between those two, forty thousand less for Public Works and sixty-five thousand additional for senior services is a net of twenty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-five.
Thank you. I seek a motion, please. Can I get a second? It's a motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five o. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item we have on the agenda is item number fourteen. It's gonna be presented by our interim county manager, Mr. Jarvis Sims. Uh, purchasing requesting approval of contract between Newton County and I Parametrics for grant consulting.
Mr. Sims.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, our purchasing under our finance department submitted a proposals for grant services. Uh, the proposal was out from November the fourteenth through December the seventh. During that time, we only received one proposal from I Parametric, and we would like to recommend I Parametric for our grant services.
Thank you, sir. Guys, I seek a motion, please. It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor?
I just have a quick question. Is this the one to, for a person to apply for all grants?
Yes, I Parametric will provide grant services for our county. Their process will be interacting with each of the departments to identify potential grant opportunities, and then at that point, we would go ahead and submit those types of grants.
The rea- the reason why I'm asking, because the, there is a search out with a description of a person who's gonna be the grant writer. Is that separate from, because I'm, I'm, I'm a little confused.
That should be, that job opportunity should be removed. This-
No, it's out there, uh, it's out there.
So we'll make sure that's removed from the website.
We might need, that might be an issue, because you have people that applied for, to be the grant writer. So how did you contact those people who applied to be the grant writer versus now going to consultant base? Because I don't remember us even discussing us going to having a consultant versus having a person who is here planted at Newton County. Oh, we talked about hybrid. I remember you and I conversed about hybrid, and you said also in the meeting, but we didn't talk about a consultant. We talked about having a specific staff member as a grant writer.
So thank you for that observation, Commissioner Sanders. We've had that position out for quite length of time. We've received very few qualified applicants for the position, and at this point, we decided to go ahead and submit before you all a proposal to have some grant services for the county, being that we've only received very few qualified applicants for the job.
And where was this published? Because I'm gonna be honest with you. Uh, when this was put on the agenda, I received calls from constituents, like, where was this posted? And that's our, also issue with our county, and I meant to mention that when we presented the website. That proposal link needs to be so seen on that website, visible, to where people can see and apply for grants or apply for, not grants, excuse me, apply for consultant or write proposals and put their bids in. I did not hear anything, and maybe it's me, I, I'll take it on me. I didn't hear about us looking for a consultant. The last discussion we had was looking for a grant writer, and we was increasing the pay, because I remember I said the pay was not good enough, and then we said we was gonna make it hybrid. So where was the consultant portion posted? Because that has been an issue, which you heard some residents come up and say, "When did this bid go out?" Obviously, they were not aware as well.
So, Commissioner Sanders, we did actually include different language for the job posting, and we still receive very few qualified applicants for the position. One of the things that the board recommended for us was to update our website, and as you can see, the website is now more transparent and allows potential applicants to apply for jobs or also apply for RFPs. So that was one of the things that you all asked, and that's one of the deliverables that we completed.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So was the grant writer services position on the website as well? Because I think I remember seeing the grant writer services on the website.
The grant writing services for proposal?
Yes.
Yes.
So they were both out there, the one for grant writer services and the one for the grant writer?
Yes, but the thing is, we should only have one. So we are recommending to the board for grant services.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that it was clarity that both of those were out there. The grant writing services, the consultant for the grant writing services, as well as the actual grant writer. Both of them were listed on the website. That's all I just want to provide clarity.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All in favor? Any opposed? It passes three, two.
Mr. Chairman, the next items we have on the agenda are items number fifteen and sixteen, presented by Ms. Trudy Hen- Henry, the Director of nine-one-one. Number fifteen, uh, nine-one-one is seeking approval for MOU between Newton County and Athens Clark County to share radio talk groups for mutual aid. And then E nine-one-one is also seeking approval for MOU between Newton County and Emory University for mutual aid and interpo- interoperability with Emory University.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are y'all?
Great, how you doing? Thank you for being here.
So here I am again, asking for approval for another MOU. Um, the first one is between Athens Clark County. Uh, their, their board's already approved it. Um, so we, it would be for interoperability if our units, public safety ever was to make it to Athens, or if Athens was ever to make it to our county. Um, we just want to have something in place so we know we can share those talk groups on each other's system.
Thank you. Guys, I seek a motion, please.
So moved.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been motion by Commissioner Ca- uh, El- uh, Henderson and second by Commissioner um, Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five o.
Thank you. And my second one is um, for Emory Oxford University. Same thing, um, if anything was to happen at the college, it would provide um, communication between our public safety units and the college police and their um, law enforcement there on campus.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Can I get a second?
Second.
Pretty quick. Um, it's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second, I think, by Commissioner um, Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? Passed a five o.
I appreciate it, and I like it fast. And just so y'all know, we are expected to cut over on the new radio system February twenty-eighth.
Yay.
It's been a long time coming.
Yay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we're at number seventeen for Parks and Recreation, presented by Mr. Dewayne Mask and Mr. Cale as well. Um, they are seeking approval for the government security light contract between Newton County and Snapping Shoals EMC for upgrading security lights to LEDs at Beaver Park in Mansfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. So yeah, though, we're looking for approval tonight to upgrade security lights to LED. Um, no upfront cost, that'd be about fifty-four dollars a month extra. This is part of our master plan. Um, so just kind of make things a little bit more secure there.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner, Commissioner Mason. Uh, any discussion? Commissioner Mason, I mean Henderson.
Man, thank you. I'm a young man now. Thank you. Thank you, Lord. Uh, uh, Dewayne, uh, uh, Mr. Mask, what I want to ask you was this. Those security lights, they're paid for by the county?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, how many security li- I know, I know we have a lot of them over, over at Cedar Pond and stuff. So any county facilities sh- if, if, uh, like Nelson Heights or like Washington Street, uh, we, the county should pay for the security lights at those facilities? I mean, this is me talking, but what I'm saying, because we paying for it, where the, like, Wash Street shouldn't have to pay for security lights. Nor should Nelson Heights pay for security lights at the facility. The county should pay for them themselves. Also, there's some talk, are you gonna put any, any security cameras out there, because I think most parks nowadays need security cameras, because people do so much stuff that they shouldn't be doing, and this is a way to keep up with what's going on in, in our parks.
Yes, so as a staff, we have had that conversation. We have got some prices, and hopefully, as we get into budget season and be able to talk to Mr. Jarvis, we'll have hopefully something to do some security cameras at some of the parks.
Yes, sir. And this is one, one last thing. I'm ready to go, Mr. Chairman, too. When y'all, we had that conversation, uh, could y'all include Nelson Heights? Because we already paying for the security cameras and the security lights, and so I know transition it, that bill over to the county. If you look at that.
Hmm.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we're at number eighteen for planning and development. It's going to be presented by our new director, Ms. Shayna Appleweight. Seeking approval of contract between Newton County and Safe Built Georgia LLC for development services consultant, not to exceed a hundred and thirty thousand. Funding source is general fund, and yes, it has been budgeted.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Chairman, yes, just as um, Ms. Ham said, this is the second company that we have contracted in development services to assist with um, building inspections and um, permit intake and so on. And it is uh, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars and budgeted, and we're seeking approval for that.
Thank you, ma'am. I seek a motion, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? Uh, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's more to come here. Congratulations.
Thank you, Chairman.
I mean, I don't know why it took so long. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All in favor? It passes five o. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we're at number nineteen. Our presenter is Mr. Marcus Jordan, our Tax Commissioner. From the Tax Commissioner's office, we have a citizen who is requesting a refund for taxes paid for property known as forty-eight Ivy Street. Um, the citizen is Ms. Christine Morgan.
Good evening. I'll go ahead and allow you to kind of introduce yourself. Uh, what we're dealing with is a property that was initially put out on the uh, tax sale, which was pulled because of, there were some legal technicalities. Then uh, Ms. Morgan came in, and from there, I'll just yield and then I can come back.
Good evening. Um, my name is Christine Detroit Morgan.
Good evening.
Uh, I basically purchased the property on uh, contingent to what Dan Ray had uh, expressed to me. Uh, I actually went into the office to inquire about forty-eight Ivy Street, and basically what I was told was that the property was pulled um, because paperwork was missing, I believe, that's what he expressed to me. And so he's, but, you know, we conversated, and he actually expressed to me to go ahead and purchase the property. Now, I didn't, I am new to this, so I did not know that you couldn't actually just go up to the window and purchase the property. I was told that it had to be sold on the steps of the courthouse, and that was by Commissioner um, Jordan. So, um, he actually went over everything with me, and he explained to me what, that there was some kind of mixed communication. And I'm, I'm gonna leave it at that. At this time, I'm just requesting a refund of my money. I am not rich by any means, and it, I, it's not a habit of me to pay somebody else's taxes. I pay my own taxes, and I live in Newton County, and basically at this point, I would respectfully request a refund.
I guess what I'm hearing is that you thought you was purchasing the property, but you actually paid the taxes for someone else.
For someone else, that I don't know who the person is.
Okay.
So.
And what, what, where was this located? At Geiger Street?
Forty, forty-eight Ivy, I V Y, yes, sir.
Okay. I think that's in Porter Dale. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
It's, it's a Porter Dale property.
So, um, Commissioner Cowan or Commissioner Henderson, what you got?
It's your district.
Okay.
Thank, uh, thank you, Commissioner Jordan, and uh, uh, thank you for, thank you for coming. Um, I have just a quick question. How, how much, I don't see the amount of money on it. How much money?
We're talking about five thousand, six hundred, sixty-one dollars and ninety cents.
You gave it in taxes? Their whole problem was that? I mean, she would look about a thousand dollars.
There was a, I think there were about four years back taxes.
Okay, okay, I got you, yeah.
It was back taxes owed, and she came in and caught it up for, for, for the people.
I have my question. Do you want to go ahead and make a motion?
Uh-huh.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion uh, to give back the five thousand-
Six hundred, sixty-one dollars and ninety-
Six hundred, sixty-one, five thousand, six hundred, sixty-one dollars and ninety-seven cent. Is that the exact amount? I, I can get you the direct number if you, if you need it. All right. I'd like to make a motion. It'd be refunded back to her for paying taxes on a piece of property that she didn't know, uh, that she thought she could, she was buying, and all she would do was pay in taxes for somebody else.
Yeah, but she-
It's been motion by-
Commissioner so generously explained the legalities to me.
It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner um, Cowan. Any more discussion? All, all in favor? Thank you. Thank you.
Can y'all draft that in a resolution and, and send it to me?
No, guys, come on, come on. We, we got it. Go ahead. Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. We'll take, we'll take care of that. I'll get with you and we'll resolve it. Yes, sir.
Item number twenty, we have Chairman Baines for Information Services. Our next presenter is Mr. Greg Mann, requesting approval to purchase six laptops and six iPads for public le- use, including ARPA applications and youth commissioners. The funding source is ARPA for seven thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and no match.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Here seeking approval for the use of ARPA funds in the amount of seven thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars for the purchase of six iPads and six laptop computers to be used for public use, including ARPA applications and our youth commissioner program. Strictly likes to, item A in our strategic plan.
All right, I, go ahead, sir.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. With uh, the change of the number of youth commissioners-
Thank you, sir.
I think we might want to adjust that.
Yeah. Um, what, what, what would you, can you come up, please? Yes. Since, since we're changing the number of um, youths that's gonna be participating in that program, um-
So I think it might even behoove us that increase in the budget if we, one of the perks of serving on the commission is that they get an iPad that after their service, they get to keep. They use it for a year. After that, they get to keep?
I don't have a problem with that, but I, I'm hoping that we'll be able to um, keep this program going. I'm hoping that the county will eventually start funding.
That's the thing, we, you gotta be careful, you creating a monster, but-
Well, I, I mean, it's, I think it, um-
With ARPA, though.
Yeah.
Until you can, right? And then you've got to fund it with general fund, but there would be nothing against buying an iPad for them, and they would-
Yeah.
They would get it in use. They would have to use it for the twelve months of service, and then at the end of that twelve months, they could take it with them as part of uh, what they get for their service to the commission. And by us adding that fifty thousand in there, there's more than enough budget to cover it.
So we need to increase six to?
We need to increase six to, what is it? We said it was two, two e- I thought we said it was four. Four, so we said twenty.
Twenty, yeah.
So, twenty iPads.
No laptops?
Um, well, you still want to get laptops, too. So part of this was that, and, and what Commissioner Henderson said was that some of the, the- So part of this was that, and, and what Commissioner Henderson said was that some of the seniors having trouble applying, we want to have equipment here so we can get volunteers that can help them do rental applications, senior home repair. So we need equipment in that regard, too. So you'll need some laptops, too, to help so that people can go out and do these applications. We already have the senior center, the local senior center here. They've got some computers, but they don't have enough. So this was another reason that precipitated that. So I'm thinking you do your iPads for your youth commissioners and you still do your six laptops so that those can be used to assist the senior population and those that don't have internet access with applying for some of these benefits that we're gonna be rolling out throughout the year.
Go ahead. Go, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I, I mean, I'm just thinking in my head how the youth commission is gonna go. I'm not even sure when they would even need to utilize those iPads. So it may not even be, need to be an expense that we incorporate. Of course, we can have them for public use for what you were talking about. We can still utilize them for public use, but not add an additional twenty for the youth commission.
I don't know what the youth commissioners will be doing, what activities they will be doing.
Because they're gonna be going on field trips and they're, they're not gonna really use them.
You wanted to do it, there's money to do it, but if not, if you just wanted to buy the six and the sixes to have to be used, you could, but it's completely at the discretion of the commission, which way they, which way they want it.
Okay. So first, let's make sure we, when we use the microphone, that way.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm hijacking.
You're good, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir.
And guys, also, when you're not speaking, please turn your mics off. The new system we got is just throwing back feedback into the system. Commissioner Sanders?
The purpose of the youth commission is to have them become acclimated with politics. So they would actually be serving like we are. They would be looking at what we're doing, looking at policy and procedure, getting our agenda, actually giving us ideas on what the youth actually need. That's the whole purpose of a youth commissioner. So having a laptop, I mean, having an iPad is not an issue, because what if they have to look up policies and various things and have projects they need to do? And some of the kids may not have an iPad or laptop at home, just like when they had, we had to go in when they had COVID. They had to distribute laptops and stuff to the kids and they didn't have it. And when they took it away, some of these kids don't have it at home. So I don't have a problem with that being an incentive because it's technology and increasing education. And with that youth commission, we can give them assignments. Where we go discover other governments, where they can utilize their laptops, I mean, their iPads within their meetings. So there's various things that could, that could be used. We don't want to deny technology from a child, ever. I don't believe in denying technology to a child and increasing their learning.
And there's an alternative. I mean, if you don't do, you know, iPads, which are rather expensive, you could do Chromebooks. You know, Chromebooks are like two hundred bucks a piece. You know, they can do searching on the internet, they connect to wifi, they can look at YouTube videos about civics. They can type, they have Word. So that's a cheaper alternative than buying, you know, a thousand dollar iPad. So that's an alternative.
Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And you may or may not be aware of this, but I have two high schoolers in Newton County schools. They provide Chromebooks to them already, that they can utilize. So we don't really need to purchase more when the Board of Education and the school system has already provided Chromebooks that they can take home with them every single day already. So they can utilize those Chromebooks for any additional things. They even have email addresses. So even if we need to send them, they have their own individual email address, their Chromebook. So they really have all of that already anyway. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So let's do this. Let's do this. So let's, we ain't even got them situated yet. If we get them here and they need, that we need to allocate funds to purchase iPads or whatever, Chromebooks, we can do that then. Let's make sure we get, as what Commissioner Henderson was talking about earlier, let's make sure we get those, those computers in place so that we can make sure that the seniors who can't apply for these, this homeowner assistance or, or rental assistance, make sure they be able to apply for it. So let's make sure, let's stick with that first.
So that's his original ask of the six and six.
Okay. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. We set the, the people assisting seniors for their pipes that need to be fixed in their homes and, and their roofs, who assist, could we, like we normally do, the insurance companies, you'd be up there, they come up here and sit up in the, around the horseshoe or over on the bench. And most of the time, I assume they was up in here. But could we have them placed here so that the seniors could come here or downstairs? For whatever, or whatever is convenient for the citizens, the seniors to come and apply for those grants for their homes?
Absolutely. And we've already been in contact with the senior center. They're helping individuals. They know how to help them with the emergency rental assistance program. They will also get trained on how to do the applications for the senior home repair. And we're hoping that we can get some volunteers from the college that would go out into the community and for people who are shut in and can't get out, help them by filling out the application using these six iPads or laptops that we want to purchase for that purpose.
One last thing, Mr. C. And that is, when the, when the Corona was kind of up and everybody was scared and the clues, schools were closed, and there was about ten or fifteen kids in Nelson Heights because their, their parents couldn't keep them during the course of the day, he put them in have Chromebooks. So I had to go over and try to get the gym who, who, at the school to see if he could help me find at least two, we found three, that we could put over there so the kids could come and use those Chromebooks, which they didn't have. So all of them didn't have Chromebooks. Or if they did, maybe they had thrown away, who knows? But we helped as many as we could and it kind of serves its purpose. So let's, let's do a little something. I think we should be doing more, a little something for our children, youth, and especially our seniors. If they did so much for us.
Mr. Chairman, we're at number twenty-one. Newton County Family Connection being presented by Laura Bertram, the, the director of Family Connections for Newton County. She's requesting Newton County Board of Commissioners to serve as a fiscal agent again for state allocation of funds to the Newton County Family Connections for July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for your time tonight and your effort to make clear so much that's so complex, particularly helping our families. I think it's terrific. I am here, does everybody have this paper in front of them? Or, no, okay, it was, oh, good. Really what it comes down to is that we have asked the county commission to serve as a fiscal agent for our state allocation of fifty thousand dollars a year, which is reimbursed quarterly to the family connection for expenses that we pay. For that privilege, we have actually endured that length of time of a relationship with the county and have served as that quirky little department that when you can't find anyone else to answer a question, we're the ones who you call. And that was, and in this kind of case with the laptops, I know for a fact that we have already recruited in the past church members to complete applications and help other seniors who knew, who didn't know how to use a computer. And we gave willing helpers three laptops so that their social service people could help with those applications as well. It is not a difficult thing to share them and to get them available out to the, to the county with volunteers. So that's what we're asking again, that you serve as the fiscal agent, which is a legal responsibility for the family connection and for that privilege of doing it for one more year. We provide you with quarterly reports. We provide, provide the same reports to the state and to our local collaborative. Any questions?
So moved. Second. Second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much.
God bless you. Thank you so much, all of you.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman, we are at item number twenty-two. Our presenter again is Mr. Jarvis Sims for purchasing, requesting approval for the contract between Newton County and iParametrics Grant Consulting. This is for the grant amount of ten thousand dollars from general fund. It is budgeted and no match is required.
Mr. Chairman, that was updated, so we've already covered that item.
Okay. Public, Public Works Approval of Contract Between Newton County and Gresham Smith to resign at Newton County, County eighteen Bridge. Mr. Chester, if you would, please come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
We have, I have identified eighteen of our bridges that need to be, need some maintenance work, some rehab work. And what we need, some of the rehab work is, is fairly complex and we need to hire a consultant to design the work so we can bid it out and have a contractor do it. Gresham, Gresham Smith helped us with the bridge that we had some issues with on two thirteen. And they have given us a proposal to do, to do the design. It's not a redesign, it's actually a design. The proposal is for three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And it'll provide bidding documents and everything we need to go to, to go to construction. We're expecting construction to be about a two and a half million dollars. It's eighteen bridges, so it's a lot of, a lot of bridges we're looking at. Gresham, GDOT inspects the bridges once every two years and they have some comments that have been on the, their inspection for several cycles. And we need to, we need to get those off. And Gresham has a couple of people working in the office. They have the contract for the maintenance design for GDOT. So they're pretty well positioned to help us get these things taken care of.
Thank you, sir. Guys, I seek a motion, please.
So moved. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you, Chester.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, we also have number twenty-four that Mr. Clegg is gonna address, requesting approval of the contract with Georgia Power and Snapping Shoals EMC to relocate power line facilities on Crowell Road at I twenty bypass project.
It's item number twenty-three.
Thank you. When we have a road project, the, the utility companies are required to move their utilities out of our, that are in conflict. And usually those utilities are on our right of way. But in this case, there are some utilities from Snapping Shoals EMC and Georgia Power that are on their private easement off of our right of way. So the county is required to reimburse them for their relocation expenses, and that's all this is. So we're, I'm requesting that the board enter an agreement with Georgia Power for one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars to, to reimburse them for relocating their power line up at the Crowell at I twenty project. And as well, Snapping Shoals EMC, an agreement for about fourteen thousand dollars to relocate their facilities.
Thank you. I seek a motion, please.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you, Chester. Have a good evening. Item number twenty-four?
Item number twenty-four, Mr. Chairman, is Cornish Creek, presented by Mr. James Brown, requesting approval of the intergovernmental agreement between Newton County, City of Covington, and Newton County Water and Sewerage Authority regarding the drinking water projects award.
Good evening. Requesting permission to enter the contract with the Water and Sewerage Authority and the City of Covington to, for the, in, for the drinking water project award.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please.
So moved. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh.
It's twenty-four A, Chairman. This is the consideration and acceptance of ARPA grant for drinking water projects.
Requesting permission to accept the funds for the American Rescue Plan Act, State Fiscal Recovery Fund, Drinking Water Project Supporting Increased Population Award in the amount of two hundred and twelve million, seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-five cents.
Wow. Two hundred and twelve million?
Two hundred and, yeah.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Two hundred and thirteen million dollars.
I seek a motion, please.
So moved. It's been, been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Discussion, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brett Bryan, so what, what, what specifically can this, can this money be spent on?
Specifically water project infrastructure improvements. So there is a list that was in the packet with the Water Resource Department, the City of Covington, the Water Sewerage Authority. Those items are in the packet that those funds had to be spent on those projects.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Congratulations, guys. Great job to you and your team and Mr. Mike Hopkins and his team and the City of Covington, you guys out there and your team. Great job. Great, appreciate y'all. Guys, if we can go back to item number twenty. If we can go back to item number twenty. I know we did take the vote on that, but I want to make sure we get those who, the ones who made the motion. So I'm gonna recall that and I'm gonna ask you guys to make that motion for item number twenty again so we have it in our records. Somebody make me a motion for item number twenty. Either one of y'all can make it. Commissioner Henderson made the motion. Can I get a second? It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Edwards. All in favor again? It passes five oh. Thank you. Next is item twenty-five, citizens' comments. This opportunity, we allow citizens to make comments. You got three minutes to do so. If you would, please state your name, your address for the record, please.
My name is Annette Alston. I am president of the Trelawney Homeowners Association. We had a meeting July twenty, twenty-two with a number of planners and Commissioner Henderson about a proposal to create a community park utilizing the common area of our subdivision. We listened to the proposal and made it clear that we were not interested at that time because there were too many unanswered questions. How would we make sure our personal property was secure? What of maintenance of the property? Would the Trelawney main entrance be used? Not sure the community wants the traffic from outside communities and non. None of those questions were answered and there was no effort to have any further discussion with the community. Meantime, we find out that without our knowledge, consultation, anything, the Addison property adjoining the Trelawney property is being given to the Boys and Girls Club. Now, to be honest, I'm not sure that our community would be totally averse to a Boys and Girls Club next door, but that's the point, you didn't ask us. And what really makes this particularly sad is the appearance that the Trelawney, Trelawney is being used in a really sick and mean spirited political game and we're the pawns. We are not in Commissioner Alana Sanders' district. We're in District Four. It is common knowledge that the money that each of the other commissioners had opportunity to use in their own individual districts as their constituents and the commissioner had determined. They, that same pot of money is now being denied to District Three. We're in District Four. Why can't Commissioner Sanders use the money that the previous commissioner did not use to do what her constituents want and what they elected her for? Our county tax dollars already went toward paying a lawsuit because you commissioners could not get your act together. You would have had, been looking at another lawsuit based on the conflict of interest because the previous commissioner sat on the board of Boys, Boys and Girls Club and still does. This stinks to high heaven and looks like another setup for a lawsuit down the line that you really should want to avoid. Our tax dollars demand it. I don't know if it's jealousy because Ms. Sanders stepped up and did what none of the other commissioners did and found matching funds through a government, government grant that I know she told all of you about, because I was actually at the board meeting when she mentioned it. She. She actually had regular community hearings on what her constituents wanted and they did not want the Boys and Girls Club. And it seems as though her district is being punished by taking funds that should be going to her project, which she had every right to have in her own district and put it in someone else's district. And there is no rhyme or reason other than spite. This is what it looks like. We shouldn't have to call you out on this. But we need to tap the Holy, you need to tap the Holy Spirit you say you believe in and ask what Jesus would do. Then do the right thing. Leave Ms. Sanders to do for her district what her district wants her to do, not what a previous commissioner wanted to do. And please, do us-
Thank you so much, man. Thank you, thank you. Next, please. Please state your name, your address, please. You have three minutes to do so. Thank you so much.
My name is Johnny Stone. I live at five hundred Cochrane Road. I've been in this county for over twenty years. Commissioners, the average citizen that lives in this county does not deal with law enforcement. They get up, they go to work, they pay the bills. The only time is when their loved ones or close friends are taken to jail. At the present time, they are denied the right to see them by the sheriff using the lie of COVID nineteen. That he says COVID nineteen is a major threat. All of Georgia has returned to work. I see no mask here except one. Even, even Piedmont Newton Hospital allows visitors. While I was waiting for the lawyer to come to the jail, I watched several jail personnel walk into the jail without a mask. And I also watched several people turned away trying to visit inmates. I know that you cannot tell the sheriff what to do, but your request to allow visitation might change his mind. Think about the effects of denying visitation has on the sheriff's department. To the loved ones of the inmates who no longer trust or want to support the hardworking and underpaid law enforcement officers. Most will not trust the justice system in this county. Why do you think defund the police and dislike of police is growing in this country? When visitation to inmate, inmates is allowed, the sheriff could make it a wonderful tool to get public support instead of treating visitors like inmates. When I first came to Newton County, an inmate could have his whole family visit him at one time. Now only one person can visit when he opens it. I took my wife before she died of cancer and was in a wheelchair to visit our son in prison. We were told that one person could visit, no exceptions. There was no way that she could roll that wheelchair down that incline at the jail to see her son. I went over to the sheriff's department and talked to a colonel over there and after a few minutes, they allowed one person to roll the wheelchair down there. You may ask, what is the danger to the officers at the jail? To get personal property of an inmate, there's a window like a theater that you put the stuff in and out. Less danger than shopping at Walmart. To visit an inmate, there is a window like a theater to put your ID through. And check, there's less danger than shopping at Walmart. When you visit an inmate, there's a glass wall and a telephone.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, sir. Next, please state your name, your address for the record, please. You have three minutes to do so.
Good afternoon. Archie Shepherd, nine one six nine Village Drive, Covington, Georgia. I'm so glad that the citizens have an opportunity to see what three commissioners could do to this county. They're not concerned about anything. Y'all not concerned about anything. Y'all just running the county. You voting the way you want to vote. You're not concerned about what people want. This is who we put in office to represent Newton County. It's a shame. It's a shame the way y'all doing. You're not concerned about the seniors here in Newton County. You're not concerned about the little kids that doesn't have anything to do. So this is who we got. This is who we represented. This is who we got to represent us. They're not, they're not concerned about us. It's a shame. The other thing is, Representative Doreen Carter had brought to the county manager that they had a grant out there that would help the seniors. And he did not take any action. He let that went by. The people wouldn't have, they wouldn't have had to jump through the hoops that they have to jump through with the AR for and he didn't even, he didn't even apply for that. So this is what's going on in the county. The people are not concerned. The ones that supposed to be representing us is not concerned at all. It's a shame. That we put people in offices thinking they're gonna represent us and then they come up and do what they want to do, not listen at the citizens. It's a shame. So I guess what we gotta do, we got to start holding y'all responsible for what we put you in office for. If you don't do it, then don't put you in office. That's what, that's what we need to do. We need to find out what people stand for before we put them in office. And so we see now that y'all are not concerned about us. You're not concerned about the citizens. You're gonna do what you want to do anyway. So that's my, my take on that.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good evening. Thank you for staying so late with us. I'm Vicki Mills, a thirty-year resident of Newton County. And I'm a member of a group that has formed a watchdog group. We would like to keep oversight of what our Board of Commissioners are doing for us as residents of the county. We appreciate the hard work. Running the county is a difficult task, but we do ask that you, as individual board members, do follow your own code of conduct, treat each other with respect. The persons who come to speak in this forum, we ask you to represent the county as we wish you to. You are elected. We would like to keep you in office if you do your job. Thank you for your time. We look forward to seeing you in the weeks to come.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. Glenn McClendon, one nine zero Fatale Road. Out here in December, we had a discussion for forty-five minutes. The board was discussing about homeless, problem for homeless people and not having shelter. I don't, I couldn't contact several commissioners about this problem and I'm trying to figure out what my next step is to get in front of the commission board and talk to them about my solution to the problem. Same thing we did tonight. Who do I talk to and how do I get in front of those? Who I talk to by getting a presentation put together?
We can talk after the board, after this meeting. So the way it works, sir, I don't, I don't want to use up your time. You, you finished?
No, I'm fine. That's my only point I got.
So we don't respond? We'll talk to you after the board meeting. You can approach your commissioner, your chair, or whoever you would like to speak with.
Well, that's, that's not a solution to the problem. That's just one person. I can't get all y'all at one time. Catch him, catch him, catch him. How can I do that? Why can't we have a uniform meeting that we can sit down and talk about a solution for a problem that we, that we facing day to day? Yeah, I mean, makes sense, don't it? I'm sorry. Make a lot of sense. That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm asking. I ain't trying to give me nothing. I don't need nothing. Ask for someone to give me some time to talk about the people, the gentleman just spoke a minute ago. We're here, y'all are here to help them. It's a solution, but nobody want to listen to it. They won't give enough time to even present it. That's the problem. That don't make sense none of us. Not me, anyway. So what we gonna do? Tell me what we gonna do next? I need to talk to my commissioner to tell me to get me in front of you guys?
Again, if you want to, I can speak to you after, after this meeting is over. I mean, we gonna go back and forth in your three minutes?
No, we're not going back and forth. I'm, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna wait till you get out and talk to you then. If you don't come back, I'll be back. I ain't going nowhere. I thank you. Appreciate you.
My name is Joseph Reed. I live one oh one oh nine Village Drive, Covington. I've been in this community all my life. I got a lot of family here. They did a lot of great things for this community and you know, and the need for that third district on what this young lady trying to do is very vital that we do it. You know, I've been in business for twenty years, you know, and I hear people talking about business license and stuff and the struggles that I have had with trying to keep my business going, you know, has been tough, you know, so it ain't that the business license. But you know, my question is why can't we help this whole community? Why we can't put the money in the whole community? Why we gotta take the money and put it in half of the community and leave the other, other half of the community hungry? Y'all talk about Nelson Heights. That's why I grew up there. I remember being hungry out there. You know what I mean? So why we can't put this money in these communities and quit fighting?
Anyone else?
My name is Howard Greigson. I live at fifty-five River Show Court, Covington, Georgia. I, thank you guys sometime forget that you supposed to be working for us, the people. See all them people back there? We meet once a week. And we gonna find somebody to run against each and every one of you if you don't do your, start doing your job better than what you're doing. You fight and bicker among yourselves more than you do anything else. It just don't make no sense. Now, about that grant thing, not the grant, the, the, well, this gentleman was talking about the thing you contracted out to, you gonna send it out to the grant writer. Mr. Mason knew that, like, he didn't know that the other party had, were gonna contract it out to somebody else and then I don't think Ms. Sanders knew either. So my question when I was sitting back there, I said, hmm, if he didn't know, she didn't know, did the rest of y'all know that? And he said, they. Long as I'm working here, a lot of people used to work they and them. We trying to figure out who are they and them. I never seen them before. I've been trying to meet they and them all my life, but if you got, somebody can write a grant or whatever, use them. Work with them. She might be able to teach you something. So that's all I got to say. We gonna vote y'all.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hey, my name is Brian Fricks. I live at one thirty Cornice Trace Drive. I want to thank you guys for your time. It's been a long meeting. I had a question clarification. I know Commissioner Cowan had asked that six months be given for the relief on leasing and mortgage. Is that, so did you increase from three months to six months on the mortgage? In that, his motion only stated six months.
So you can talk to, and I'm not sure if you've been here, I think you have been here before.
Yeah, but not.
So you can, you can speak with one of the commissioners or you can ask county manager afterwards, after this. But go ahead and present your questions.
All right, so that, that was a question that I had. And then also just wanted to ask about, oh, is not the time or is it part of the time?
Go ahead.
Okay, and then the truck, truck ordinance on number nine. You know, I don't think we need to put any burden on the working man, the guys going out every day trying to bring bread to the family. You know, maybe in neighborhoods, make it where the truck has to fit in the parking, assigned parking lots. So I mean, you got the lawn care guy, you got the electrician, you got the AC guy. I mean, you got people out trying to make a living and they gotta try to find something to do with their vehicle. You know, I think it's probably more geared towards transfer trucks, dump trucks, things like that. I mean, police officers, they have a service car. Every one of us get in the car every day and go to work. It's just our trucks don't look the same as the working man's truck. So I think definitely some clarification needs to be done on that part. And then also just wanted to commend Pastor Lett for what she's done for the Mormon Shelter and just would like to see the commission, the cities really work together to kind of help. And not just have a warmest center, but something that we could have for people year round to help those in need. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, wait a minute. I didn't say it. Miss Thelma.
Good afternoon. My name is Thelma Starnala. I live at thirty-one sixty-three Stone Mountain Street. I heard the consultant when she was put amount, on the amount of money that you give the senior citizens and everybody else for home improvements. With the cost of living and everything else is going up in the materials and then you have to find somebody to do the work and pay them too. So the amount of money they're gonna give is not enough. So why don't you increase it to a thirty or forty thousand dollars? Because you got people out there that need a whole lot of work done on their house. You got people out there that are on fixed income. You got young people out there that are working two jobs and still can't make it. Okay, so even though she's not from around here, why do people have to go online? You got young folks don't have computers. So all the burdens are put on our back, but she works for us too. She getting paid. So why can't y'all hire somebody or get somebody to come in here five days a week, Monday through Friday, and help people? Because like I said, we elected y'all. And if all we gonna do is sit up here and argue, we can do this ourselves. Everybody else getting paid, but we getting left our doors in the cold. So I thought, why, we gonna be in the homeless shelter too? And for you, Mr. Van Jarvis, I don't mean to disrespect you, anything like that. But a lot of people told me that they had been calling you. So how often do you work from home or how often do you work from here? And I know y'all can't answer me and you know, I think that y'all need to set some better guidelines. Because when y'all run for office, y'all come, y'all knock on your door, y'all call. But when y'all want us to vote for y'all, to put y'all in them seats, we don't have to get permission from nobody else. Y'all can talk to us then. But when you come in this meeting, it's a whole entire different story. Y'all like, y'all ignore like we ain't nobody. God made us all. So y'all need to start treating us better than what y'all treat us. Because y'all need us, we don't need y'all. Because we vote for y'all, we give y'all those seats. And so the lady need to do a better job because like I said, she getting paid while a lot of folks ain't getting no money. And if we gotta wait half of a year to get something done on our house, then we all in trouble. Y'all may not need the money, but we do. And thank y'all.
Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll, I, I do, I look forward to hear the discussion and the recommendations on the, on the truck and the driveway stuff. I want to say congratulations to Brittany and her organization. We have a lot of fine organizations, but tonight was a highlight of what her organization does and the teamwork they, they exhibit. Much, much appreciation to those folks. And much appreciation and we have to have a special night, I believe, Mr. Chairman, for, for our Public Works Department when this, when this is, when this storm cleanup is all over.
We definitely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mason. Commissioner Sanders.
The past recent week has been a very interesting week. I was accused of being the chairman. I was told I forged documents and all this great and wonderful stuff. But people didn't take the time to go view the documents. I even was told, asked for open records and then came back and said, I'm just gonna go through your emails and give me your county phone. All various things. And so once I submitted those documents, they saw that I did nothing fraudulent. I was here to help a community. I saw a need that we have not been meeting in this county. So I was here to help a community where we were awarded a four million dollar grant from HUD, passed through Congress. And we made a huge ruckus over funding that could have been given to the community. Yes, I take the responsibility of not coming before my colleagues. I take that responsibility. Yes, I take the responsibility of not coming before my colleagues, I take that responsibility. But that grant was sent to everyone to apply, and yes, there is a policy, and I take that responsibility, and I will not do that again. But to try to put me out there as though I stole something, or I'm trying to receive four million dollars, or I'm trying to act like I'm the chairman of this county, no, I am Commissioner Elena Sanders. And I acted as a public servant in this county to be able to supply funding for our community. Tonight was very disheartening, but it will not shut me up, all you did was increase the fight inside of me. That's who I am, I'm a fighter, you increased the fight inside of me. While I make sure that everything in this county for our kids, our youth, everybody that needs something done is gonna be done. As you can see, since I've been in office, I've been working, I've not been taking, I've been working. I haven't cost this county money, there's no pending lawsuit for me, there's no, I have never sued this county, nor have I have a pending legal case. I have been working. And so, and with that being stated, with that being stated, no, I'm not starting nothing, I'm saying the facts, I'm stating facts. So coming from me as though I have done something illegal, or if I had stated I've done something illegal, or written some documents, or done something illegal, trying to seek money for this county, that's preposterous, if you could spell it. And I thank you so much for you guys and your support, and allowing me to be able to serve you as Commissioner Elena Sanders and doing my job as a public servant, it is time out for this board utilizing their position just to do what we want instead of listen to what the residents want in this county. It is time out for this county not listening to the people in this community who put us in place. If you look at the organizational chart, they are our boss, we are not the boss of this county. And again, you haven't shut me up, you just elevated the fight.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, you know, I just want to begin just by saying, this is Black History Month. And Black History Month, when I think about it, you know, sometimes, when I first was an adolescent, I would come up to the, up to the, it wasn't a horseshoe up here, but across the street at Old Croker, and I would visit the meetings, and when I visited the meeting, there were no people of color up there. And by nineteen seventy-five, Reverend Harold Carr, he was the first black commissioner. And I said, man, we just, we always made it, you know, and there was a little difference, and then there was African, and then now it's myself. And I was a young man a long time ago, now I'm the old man. All I had ever wanted was to, for me, and I guess for the community that I served, and being raised up here in Newton County, was just to be treated right. I never asked for too much, everything, I never, I never asked anything, everything that I wanted, I would work for it in order to get it, or do the best that I could. And it happened. I was successful in having more parks than anything. But it seems to me now we're going backwards. It seems that when we get people to come out and say, well, you know, I'm gonna start taking my children to a plantation, and they never even know the history of a plantation. And they didn't know, I guess, because they're younger than me, than what they did in plantations. And thankfully, it's be the only county in a hundred and fifty-nine counties that support a plantation funded through a general fund, over three, it ran at three hundred thousand dollars. And a little bit of money was given Nelson Heights and Watch Street, about forty thousand dollars, I never thought was that much. A little bit of money was given to it, you put together eighty, and then there was another, if you subtract that from it, it's another two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. They're going, that's not accountable for nothing, and here I find myself. Going back again, it's taking me back again through a forensic audit that was did four years ago, an audit. Asked me all kinds of papers and stuff, and so I said, well, what y'all mean, where am I on it? I said, my son Anthony is over on five-one-six-three for Nelson Heights Community Services. And he told me, he said, well, no, he said, you over it. And I looked at the letter of engagement, and it said, J.C. Hill is the president of Nelson Heights Community Services. And I pulled a record, I said, maybe I missed something, passed four or five years, and I pulled a record from the state that said that Anthony Hill was over it. And for nine months, from August, they were investigating me for Nelson Heights where I shouldn't be. But I tell you what I told them, you better take my name off of it. Because if you don't, I'm, we ain't got no insurance, you better answer, because I'm gonna sue, I'm gonna sue the county for y'all putting a name on something it shouldn't be on. I'm tired of them beating up on me for no reason at all, and they hadn't did nothing. I'm tired of them trying to make my name look bad, and the only thing I did was work hard for this commission. Most of the black folks up here wouldn't have been up here if it hadn't been for our leaders doing Black History Month, like Forrest Sawyer, or like Harold Carr and others, like Fleming Pitts, and several others, like Mr. Johnson, and all the school chiefs who worked hard and marched, and some of them died just to give us the right to be up here. And this is what you do to us.
Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, it's been an interesting meeting tonight. From my viewpoint, as far as the Westside Youth Center, we looked at some property off of Brown Bridge Road, and we actually made an offer, or actually we had an appraisal of that property. And we brought it back to the owner, and she rejected it because she wanted another half million dollars more than it was worth, so we turned it down. And if any of y'all willing to buy a property that's worth a half million dollars more than the appraised value, I got some junk cars to sell, okay? And I wouldn't recommend that, and I do real estate law all the time. You have to do, you have to follow what the appraised value is. Now, not saying that the site is not a good site, site is a good site.
Come on, guys, y'all let him do his sign. Go ahead, sir.
Site is a good site. I've asked for drawings, I've asked for, tell me what you want this thing to look like. I have had nothing given to me in returns of, we talked about football fields, we talked about walking trails, we talked about, I haven't seen anything, I've asked for.
Man.
No, I haven't.
Listen, listen, listen.
I haven't, I have not seen.
Make your comments, Commissioner.
I have not seen anything from anybody.
Commissioner. Well, make your comments.
Listen, I have, and she's right, I probably have not checked my email, but I have not seen anything like that. I wish that somebody would just hand me a piece of paper and give it to me, rather than send it on an email. All right. That project, though, is, and then the Addison property, whatever that is, that came up, I think it was last year. We turned it down, and it came back up, he wanted to give it to the county. Hey, I'm one, if you want to give us something, we ain't gotta buy nothing, we'll take it. And it backs up to additional property that the county already owns. Now, that being said, I'm not saying that anybody's done anything wrong whatsoever. I don't think the property that, buying it at that half-million-dollar inflated price was reasonable. So we should have done something better on that. But I will say, and I do agree with Commissioner Sanders, it's not a bad piece of property. As far as the truck ordinance, we're working on that. We're trying, not trying to have an impact on people who are working out of their homes for their, with their businesses. And hopefully that'll get done. As far as Gaethers, Gaethers, and I know Commissioner Henderson has left. I did some title work, and that's what I do, I do title work, checked that a little bit. That property for thirty years was known as Myrtle Creek Farms. Prior to that, it was known as the Gaither House. I never could find anything in the record where it was called a plantation. It wasn't called a plantation until the county bought it. Which is insane to me. But it was bought for the purposes of.
Thank you, sir.
Let me just finish this one, let me just finish this thought.
Sir.
It was bought for the purpose of.
Mr. Cowan.
Stopping Gwinnett County from putting a spray field next to the reservoir.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Commissioner, I see a motion that we adjourn, please. Thank you.
Second.
We stand adjourned.